Welcome to the fourth hearing of the committee's inquiry into the ability of local governments to fund infrastructure and services. I acknowledge the Widgeby people of the Bundjalang nation, the traditional custodians of the lands on which we're meeting today. I pay my respects to elders at past, present, and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people that are joining us here today. My name is Emily Saval and I'm the Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today, however, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. Now to our first witnesses, welcome. Can I ask, thank you so much, I suppose at the outset, for making time to give evidence today, but also for having us here in Lismore today. Could I ask each witness to begin by stating their name, position, title, as where either the oath or affirmation, starting with you, Mr Hartley?
Yes, John Hartley. I'm the Acting CFO, Chief Financial Officer, and I'll do the oath, if that's all right. So, want me to read the oath? "I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God."
Stephen Craig, the Mayor of Lismore, and "I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God."
Thank you. And would either of you like to start by making an opening statement?
I'll make a brief statement on behalf of the council, if that's okay. And first of all, welcome to Lismore. It's really good to see you. I've met a lot of you in Sydney at different things, so it's really good that you've made the journey to Lismore. It's a really critical part of the state economically and, you know, for a number of different reasons. So, thanks to the committee. I remember talking to Emily about this down at country mayors, about how Lismore would be a great place to hold this inquiry. It couldn't have come at a better time. And on behalf of the Northern Rivers region, many of whom will be represented today, I'd like to thank you for coming to Lismore, the heart of the Northern Rivers. It's a really fascinating time that this inquiry has come to the Northern Rivers. As we all know, that state government has passed down their budget and local government is now very much in the process of doing the same thing. Lismore City Council last night adopted their biggest budget on record, some $300-plus million, which is made up in a number of ways in regards to our recovery post the 2022 disaster. So, a very big budget, unusually large, but it's also a very stressful time for our community as well. We have business as usual to deal with, as well as the flood recovery, which conservative estimates will take us through to 2029 before a lot of our infrastructure work is complete. So, on top of dealing with flood recovery and big numbers in regards to the flood recovery process, we're also dealing with a community that has suffered and been through a lot of trauma over the last two years as well. As a council, we're very mindful of that, but as a council, we're also responsible for maintaining balance books. And that is a challenge when many people lost homes, lost businesses, lost jobs through the disaster, yet as a council, we still have to provide services. And the costs continue to rise. We have no control over that, so we have to be prudent and explore ways of increasing our revenues as a council to meet those costs. So, I really am thankful to be given the opportunity to speak at this inquiry at a very timely point in our financial year. And I'm sure there'll be many pertinent and pressing questions that we'll look forward to answering for you. So, thanks for the opportunity.
No.
Thanks so much. We'll now move to questions, and we'll just do questions in a free-flowing fashion, so I'll just indicate, look to my colleagues to see if anyone wants to start.
Thank you, I might kick off there. And Steve, thank you very much for having us here in Lismore. We all very much appreciate the hospitality of council here, but also getting an understanding in terms of the wake of the recovery and, of course, what you're up against. You said you've got a $300 million budget. How does that compare to what would be the typical council budget here in Lismore?
Typically, a council's budget's about the $180 million. So, it's, that's on a substantial year. It's probably around the $150 to $180 million.
So, of course, with an increase of that magnitude, that comes with an extra staff, extra expertise that you need in terms of being able to manage a budget of that scale. What sort of access do you have to, let's say, other specialists through either the state government or through local government in New South Wales? Is there any facilitation that's been provided to you there?
Yeah, we've had to lobby pretty hard, but I will give credit to the state government in the level of support that has been offered in and around our flood recovery. We all know what happened in Queensland in 2011 with Grantham, and that was their line in the sand moment for that state in their way of setting up their Queensland Reconstruction Authority. Lismore in 2022, or the Northern Rivers in 2022, was New South Wales' line in the sand moment where I think the state government actually realised that we actually need to have some agency for preparedness and recovery. So, Lismore and the Northern Rivers is very much, I see, as a pilot programme. So, we've been very fortunate to have a lot of support in and around specialist help. What I will say, though, is a lot of the support offered, especially financially, is a one-off thing, that it is finite. Like I said before, we're looking at a conservative estimate of 2029, and that's dependent on a lot of things, such as weather, availability of workers and all of those sorts of things, being able to house workers. There's a lot of factors to make that timeframe fit. But there's no guarantee year on year that we're gonna be catered for. And so, the $301 million-odd budget this year, it would be nice to have some certainty that that will continue for the course of our recovery. You know, we don't have that level of certainty necessarily, and even that sort of money is something that has been fought very hard for by our officers at council and also our councilors. So, it really is a challenge. We're very lucky that experts have wanted to come and help. If you're an engineer, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to actually rebuild a regional centre. And so, people have come to us in many ways, which we're very fortunate about, but we want to be able to have the certainty that we can keep them for as long as we need. I don't think we have that certainty at the moment. So, that does cause an underlying stress for us.
And I guess with that expertise as well, and you mentioned this in your submission, that there's an expectation from the community, if something's not being provided, council's the first port of call that people go to. And one of those, I think you've outlined as well, is affordable housing. So, you've got all these people who are coming to the region to be able to help with the reconstruction. You've got, of course, a loss of your housing stock due to the floods. You've got to accommodate people somewhere. How are you dealing with that as a council at the moment?
It's a really interesting question, because as council, as councilors, as council staff, we actually have some really innovative and good ideas that could actually save the taxpayer quite a lot of money. As I said before, 2022 was a bit of a line-in-the-sand moment for New South Wales, and we really didn't know what we were doing, either at local government, state government, or federal government level, to be honest with you. And we're writing policy and legislation as we go. And the example, the reason I mention this is the pod villages that took up some $350 million to implement. We're expecting upwards of 500 transient staff, workers, to come in to help with our reconstruction efforts in and around our road networks and our infrastructure build. Now, we've got a school that won't be going back as a school down in Lismore itself, Trinity Catholic College, which I took the CEO of the Reconstruction Authority, Mr Langion, through only a couple of weeks ago. Now, that is a building that is estimated in and around $20 to $30 million to be able to fit that out for worker housing. You know, the talk around bringing in Donga villages and the like is a very expensive process. Now, here's an opportunity that we can use, a structurally sound, very flood-resilient building that's sitting vacant, which could save our taxpayers a lot of money. And as a council, we've identified that, but getting through the bureaucratic processes to make that a reality is something that we find a challenge. But we find as a council, we're very much being dictated to by the state government, and that's also an ongoing drama for us in a lot of ways, because we have the local knowledge, we have the local expertise, but we are very often left out of the conversation. And that's a real hard aspect to deal with, and it's not through our lack of trying, it's just the process at the moment. And as I said before, we are learning as we go, we're writing this legislation as we go, but I think if local government was involved a lot more, I think we would be able to achieve a lot better value for the taxpayer money.
And last question from me. You note in your submission about the federal assistance grants and the fact that they were at 1% of federal taxation revenue, now at 0.5% of federal taxation revenue, and you extrapolate that into, I think, about a doubling of what you would receive if it was still at 1% here in Lismore. Have you had any conversations with the federal government about federal assistance grants in the wake of the floods here as well? And what sort of federal government assistance are you receiving as well?
All of the federal government assistance, the short answer to your question is no, but Lismore City Council are active members of the Australian Local Government Association, Local Government New South Wales, country mayors, regional cities. So, we're a part of a lot of forums that actually take the fight up to the federal government. I've heard Linda Scott, the Chair of the Australian Local Government Association, lobbying very hard on behalf of all of the councils across the country to lift that rate back to 1%. We don't speak to the federal government too often about funding as far as flood recovery goes. A lot of the money that we receive flows from the federal government to the state government and then on to local government. In a lot of ways, that's an issue. There's a lot of middle-management costs that are lost there. And again, I speak not only as the mayor, I also own a small business, and I think if I was able to waste as much money as bureaucrats do on setting up a nice office and getting five secretaries, I'd be doing pretty well myself. But, you know, the people on the ground that can see more efficient ways and better ways to spend taxpayer money, it is a frustration. But we primarily deal with the Reconstruction Authority and other state government agencies to get our funding. Where they get their funding from, to be brutally frank, is no concern of mine. I just want the money to flow to Lismore.
Thank you, Mayor Craig.
Thanks. I might just jump in with a question now on a different sort of topic. I wanted to ask about your waste facility. So, my understanding is you've got a waste facility that was intended to be a regional centre for waste management, which on the surface level seems quite similar to one that Newcastle Council created, and is quite a profitable business. I was wondering what your thoughts are around why one has succeeded, so why Newcastle's has succeeded and the one up here has not?
It's a really good question. The original intention, and I will clarify, I've only been the mayor for three years, I've been a resident for 25 years, so I look at it from a couple of different perspectives. One of the great frustrations when I got elected is some of the businesses of council were very unprofitable, are running at a loss. You can point that to a number of factors. We set up a waste facility, when I say we, the council before my time set up what was to be a regional facility. When China shut the doors to the recycling back those years ago, a lot of our neighbouring councils, we've got a very active Northern Rivers Joint Organisation, as it's called, who you'll hear from a lot of the members. It consists of seven councils. Lismore had the vision that we would become the regional waste centre. The other councils looked at the economics and found it more affordable to look after their own waste. We've got a private landfill site in Ipswich, just across the border, and it was cheaper for the other councils to outsource their waste pickup and ship their waste to that private facility than to invest in the regional hub, which was going to be Lismore. Those other councils can probably answer as to why or the economics behind that. I can't speak for them, obviously, but we had a facility that was over-capitalised, under-utilised, and has cost us, I believe, and Mr Hartley will be able to clarify, but it was costing Lismore City Council ratepayers about $6 million a year to operate. So, we were losing about $6 million a year. I agree with what you're saying. I know Albury has a fantastic waste facility that generates about $3 to $4 million a year. We wish we were in that position. For whatever reason, whatever circumstance, that hasn't happened, but again, it gets back to the responsibility of the elected members to make decisions to try and keep ratepayer costs as affordable as possible. So, the waste is an interesting case study for Lismore. We've done a very deep dive into our waste facility, and we're exploring ways now to be able to make that, at least get to a break-even point in the next two to three years, so that it's not costing our ratepayers money.
Can I just add to that? One of the imposts to the waste facility is we are charged a New South Wales EPA levy. Currently, because we're going to Queensland, naturally, we don't pay that. However, that's an additional cost to council, and we get very few of those dollars back to this area in to actually improve our waste facility. So, that's a cost that the ratepayer is bearing, which is going to a consolidated revenue in council, to New South Wales Government. As the mayor has said, we have done a review of the waste facility. We are in initial stages, we've fixed one side of it, there's further ways to go, and we are developing plans around that. And hopefully, well, not hopefully, we will achieve a better result, but it will take time.
And just to suppose a follow-up. Steve, you mentioned, or councillor Craig, I should say, you mentioned around some, I suppose what you would call legacy decisions or issues. How well-prepared or equipped do you think councillors are when taking, you know, taking office, to be able to make some of those decisions in an informed way? And what could we better do to ensure that our councillors were as able as possible to make, you know, such important decisions in a really informed way?
Yeah, it's a really interesting question, and I can only speak for myself with this, but I was really underdone coming into this. I came in from a small-business background, but understanding a lot of the issues, and I'm not critical of anyone, local government, as any level of government, is a tough job. It is not easy, and you've got to make unpopular decisions, and you've got to upset people. There is no decision that is ever made by any level of government that is going to be popular for 100% of the population. It's not easy. And I honestly believe that the decisions made 10, 15, 20 years ago, the councillors believed that they were the right decisions at the time. Now, things change. We all know that global economic processes change all the time, which can have an effect. And, you know, all we can focus on and all we can worry about is our own backyard. Local government is very much about looking after your own LGA. You know, I, as the mayor, my primary concern is the 42-odd thousand residents that live in my local government area, and how I can improve their little lot in life to give them the best possible outcomes. And some decisions that we make will achieve that, some decisions people might not like, but I believe that I make those in the best interests of the whole community. No one's prepared, and as every elected member would know, you can never get used to the constant negativity, but you've just got to, it takes a special person to be, to put their hand up to be elected into any sort of public life. And I don't know how you can, I think people who are elected may second-guess themselves if they're actually told what they're in for once they are elected. I don't know. I don't know how you can improve the knowledge of people wanting to stand for government, but all I know is that, for myself, be it right, wrong, or other, in all honesty, I don't care about the election result, because I believe that I've made a difference for the betterment of the Lismore LGA. If the electorate like that, they'll vote me back in. If they don't, I'll know that maybe I haven't done as good a job as what I thought, but that's all I can sort of point towards. I hope that's sort of answered your question.
Do you have any further thoughts on that, Mr Hartley?
From, I've put my financial hat on. So, from a financial perspective, it's about the financial planning. It's about getting the map together on how we can achieve a sustainability and then sticking to the plan. It's, unfortunately, you know, it's the way politics works, you know, people come in and have a different viewpoint and want to go in a different direction. But I believe from a financial sustainability, you put the basics in place, you stick to the plan, and you keep following the just basic business principles. And then councillors need to be informed with all the information available to them, and hopefully they make the decision based on what's sound for the council overall in the long term, not the short term.
With all that in mind, and I know it's mentioned sort of in your submission about the hardship in particular that your residents are experiencing, when we look at the rate peg, and we've heard a lot about the rate peg in this inquiry, if we were to look at an alternate safeguard, if you like, what alternate safeguards would be appropriate to ensure that any rate increases are affordable?
I think it comes back to the business model of not just local government, but state government, federal government as well. I think, be it perception or reality, the average ratepayer and taxpayer sees excess through all levels of government. And there should probably be some sort of standard, and again, I put my business hat on, I can't spend more than I earn, otherwise I'll go broke. Government doesn't seem to have that level of accountability as such, but I think there needs to be that base model of you have to pay your core business bills before you worry about the ideological projects. And it might sound naive or ideological in a sense as well, but every level of government should have some form of base business model that they need to follow, so that if my community wants a $20 million brand-new sports stadium built, well, then we're going to have to pay for it somehow, and then that's when you can go to IPART and say, well, we need to put our rates up to cover that. But as Mr Hartley said, I think, you know, we need to look at how we operate as a business model, so that we don't have to necessarily burden our ratepayers through ideological or unrealistic decisions that are made by an elected body that are only here for a short term.
I'd just add to that, again, it comes out to you need to engage the community and have the level of service that they're happy to accept. And once you have that, then you fund it, and it may be that you're required to increase rates at a certain level. How do you put a safeguard in? That's the difficult part, because every council's different. We have a large area that's flood-affected, the roads are flood-affected, and we have a lot of renewals and infrastructure we need to maintain, but we have also a large area that's probably not high in the social-economic area and the financial side of it. So, actually, to levy those rates with those people, to actually maintain infrastructure, it's very difficult for Lismore. So, again, it's determining the level of service the community wants.
Could we better customise the rate peg for each individual council, just taking in mind, Mr Hartley, what you've sort of said about the unique needs?
I think the individual circumstances of each council need to be taken into consideration. What's good for a regional council in Sydney, which has great roads, great levels of, you know, base and everything, is different to Lismore City Council. So, how do you actually accommodate that? That's probably something I can't answer off the top of my head, but I believe, yes, each council's circumstances need to be taken into consideration.
Just push the button, Amanda, sorry.
Sorry, I'm not used to having to push the button. Thanks again for both your time today and for hosting us in your council chamber, we really appreciate it. So far in this inquiry, we've heard statewide about community expectations of local government and how that's changed over the decades, you know, particularly rural and regional councils providing a broad range of social services, whether that's early childhood education, sport and rec, arts and culture, community facilities. I was particularly interested in your role in terms of disaster resilience and recovery. Your written submission spoke a lot about infrastructure, which I'll come to in a minute, but I'm interested in that sort of social infrastructure question, and I imagine that with the housing crisis and the cost of living crisis as well, that there would be an increased reliance on things like community centres or council-provided childcare services. How's that impacted your budget?
So, we've, one of the decisions council have made in the past is to remove ourselves from services that are provided by the community, so we don't do childcare and things like that, because it is provided adequately by other areas of the community. We have had a big impost on us providing services in other areas, helping the community through the whole flood recovery. We've been fortunate to get some grants from the government to assist us with getting recovery officers. However, it's about balancing the needs of the community and not impacting them with increased fees, but again, we've had basic services that we need to deliver. And unfortunately, the cost of delivering those services is increasing continually, wage increases, CPI increases. It's a difficult way to balance that up, but all I can say is that there has been a more demand of council services. We are looking at the housing, but again, it's not a short-term solution. I don't know how to answer it another way, so.
And I think the overall community's lines are blurred between what local government provides or should provide and what the state government should provide. So, things like affordable housing seems to fall back onto council, like... Why isn't council providing affordable housing? Is that council's role, is my question? And the answer to that, traditionally not, but there is a gap that state government is not picking up. And so, because council is the closest level of government to the community, those people come to us and say, we need help. And so, there's a bit of a moral obligation as well to try and... to try and provide that's, that level of housing as well. And that's just one example. But I think there needs to be really clear definition of what the role of state government and their agencies are and what the role of council is. And if, if it is going to fall onto council to provide some of these services, then council needs to be funded to do it. And that's the problem that we're having at the moment is that people are coming to us. And as you say, we're in a, in the midst of, um, a recovery from a massive disaster and people turn to the local government because we're here. We've got councillors in the room that speak to community members daily. You know, we all receive emails, phone calls. Every time we go to Woolworths, we get asked questions. We're there, uh, and, and there is a level of moral obligation that we try and help those people. But I turn to the fact that is it really our job? And the answer financially, no. We don't have the funds to do it. But morally, yes, because they're our community and we, we want to help where we can. And that's why we get into local government.
Can I just add something else? With regards to this particular event, um, how it's impacted council, council wrote off quarter million dollars in water charges, uh, excess water fees for the, the residents who were affected, had to wash out their houses. Uh, we also deferred, uh, rate collection. So we didn't chase up rate payers for, um, that were affected in the area. So we have done as much as we can. We actually wrote off interest for people who actually hardship. So it has impacted our budget. However, it's just something we had to do to support the community.
Thank you. And if I could just follow up, Mr Hartley, on your, your first answer. Um, when you mentioned that you had some grant funding for recovery officers and you, you indicated that there had been an increase in demand for other types of council services. Um, could you give examples of those or can you take it on notice?
I'd have to take it on notice, thank you.
Um, I also wanted to ask about your infrastructure maintenance backlog, um, which you provided some detail about in your written submission. Um, and I thank you for that. Um, you've obviously got a fair bit of short term money out of flood reconstruction grants. Um, once those short term grants are spent, what's your current plan to address the infrastructure maintenance backlog?
The councils last year adopted a strategic asset management plan. We have individual asset management plans and we have a long term financial plan. Uh, that combined with our delivery plan sets our future. The trouble is to actually achieve the, the benchmarks set by the Office for Local Government, we actually need to achieve an efficiency or increase our costs only by one and a half percent. That's an assumption we put in there, which virtually is an efficiency council's got to find over the next five to six years when inflation's running at three to five percent. That's a significant challenge for council. As with the backlog, you're, you're right. In the short term, we'll get, um, flood funding to renew our assets back to where they were before the flood. But after that, we then resort to the fact that we have to actually then fund a $34 million depreciation bill, which means we're using our assets to that extent each year. And that's, that's the challenge. Um, we need to actually maintain our assets in a sustainable way. So we're not going to impact the future generations. Yeah, that's the challenge we have.
If I could just, um, push a little bit further. You, you talked about, um, the efficiencies that council will need to find moving forward. What does that actually mean for the community?
That's the difficult question. We need to actually look at a part of our strategy. And I think it's no, no secret. We, we need to look at our service reviews. We need to go through and find out the service reviews. We need to look at our business units that aren't performing, uh, such as the waste facility. Uh, when I say business units, service delivery units that aren't as efficient as they should be. We need to identify how we can be better at delivering what we do deliver. Um, that's the efficiency we need. But also then we need to cap our increases in our costs. We just need to say, well, we can only increase our costs by this level. We then need to determine how we can deliver what we want to deliver to the community. We go to the community and say, well, this is what we can deliver. If you want more, unfortunately you need to pay more. But we set that service level with the community.
We're also, again, dealing with a lot of legacy issues. In, Lismore's an old city. We're founded in 1856 and some of our infrastructure, such as our, uh, water main lines, are 100 years old. And because of some of the legacy issues of not having asset management plans to, to either upgrade or replace, uh, we're finding now that we're, we're having a lot of, uh, big upfront capital expenditure because those 100-year-old pipes are failing and failing badly. So, you know, water charges for our, for our rate payers are higher than they probably should be because of, uh, we're losing a lot of water um, through just old rundown infrastructure. Our road network, exactly the same. Some of those tarmacs haven't been upgraded or touched for 30 or 40 years. And, you know, residents of Lismore, uh, often spook about how Lismore is the pothole capital of Australia. But, you know, I know that there are other councils that would put their hand up for that. Uh, we're not alone in that area. But I, I also think it's, again, it gets back to the basic business of council and having that basic business model. Every council needs to have that strategic asset management plan to be able to upgrade and repair as needed. So a 70-year-old water main, for example, might be able to be re-lined for a tenth of the cost, but you might get another 50 years out of it. And having those strategic plans in place is really critical. We're dealing with a legacy problem that we haven't had that necessarily upgraded or, or maintained over the last, um, few decades. But we are getting on top of it. We understand that there's a lot of, uh, work to do in that regard, but we're committed to it. And through the great work of our council staff, uh, we've got a lot of people that are, are very passionate about getting Lismore back to being the best regional centre in Australia. And that's our goal and that's what we'll strive to do.
So what has also helped, we, we've been fortunate enough to get an Office for Local Government grant of $20 million for capacity and capability. It's essential that that grant is, you know, runs its course because we have plans in place to address the issues in the backlog. We need that money actually to keep on going. So we, we have a strategy in place on how we can address some of the issues we've got. One is the asset management plan, one's a long term financial plan. But again, it needs to run its course so we can actually achieve the outcomes of that money.
One more question if I may, yeah. Um, my last question is about cost shifting. Um, local government New South Wales has done an excellent job of quantifying the impact of cost shifting at a state level. But I'm interested at a local level if there are specific examples that come to mind of, um, recent cost shifting that we might need to look at addressing.
Yes, I actually have a summary in front of me. It's, our estimate is 10. Yes, that's right. Uh, our estimate is $10.2 million in cost shifting. Um, that's excluding the EPA levy because naturally at the moment our waste facilities are closed because of the flood and we're going to Queensland. So even without that, which is normally about one and a half million dollars a year, we're at up to $10.2 million. Uh, if you want particular examples, um, the emergency services levy, uh, that's been shifted onto council with rural fire service, uh, SES service, uh, New South Wales Fire Service. Uh, that's, that's a significant cost to us. Uh, I've got an online item, I can provide it to you if you like, which is the summary.
Please, we'd love to be provided with that list.
I'll make sure you get a copy.
We just, we just did a quick estimate. It, we estimated adds about $550 per rates notice to each, um, household in Lismore.
I'm going to turn back to that infrastructure question. Um, and in terms of, as you quite rightly say, Mayor Craig, in terms of Lismore being an old developed city, you've got those infrastructure constraints. Do you think in terms of the models that you put forward in terms of the financial viability of the council, in terms of rate determinations or even special rate variations, that that's captured enough by state government in terms of its consideration of your funding challenges? Or are they comparing apples with oranges, so to speak?
Short answer is no. Uh, you know, coming from a regional centre, you feel very much like the forgotten child. And I, I say that because you feel like state governments are very metro centric. Um, you know, we hear all the time that NSW stands for Newcastle, Sydney, Wollongong. And for us, the great frustration is that $1.5 billion to build a new football stadium in the heart of Sydney is, is, um, accepted and celebrated. But, you know, we're looking at a $1.5 billion flood mitigation programme here to protect a major regional centre, which people are saying good luck getting the money for. Now, to me, that weighs up, what are our values in this state? Is it providing a nice stadium to play a game of football? Is it, or is it to protect upwards of 10,000 residents and 3,000 businesses and a very substantial local economy? Uh, yet we feel like in the regions, we are fighting tooth and nail. And I've said it to many state and federal, uh, members of parliament. I'm, I feel like I'm a glorified beggar every time I go to Sydney or to Canberra asking for things that metropolitan councils don't have to ask for. They are provided. Um, you know, you can see all of these beautiful new tunnels that are getting built through Sydney to cut five minutes off someone's commute time. Yet our major highway linking 300,000 odd residents drops down to a single lane and one small traffic accident can cause delays of four hours. You know, we've been calling for a dual, like a dual carriageway between Lismore and Ballina. The state government owns the land. It's there, the planning's done, it's ready to go, yet the money's taken, been taken out of the budget. You, and we look at that and go, well, you can build a multi-billion dollar tunnel to cut five minutes off people's commute time from Western Sydney to Inner Sydney. Yet we've got 30,000 car movements a day going between Ballina and Lismore and Casino and we can't even get a dual carriageway. And at much less cost. So it's, it's frustrating. It's, it, it makes you angry. It makes, and, and we're not paying any less tax or we're not contributing any less to everyone else across the state. But, you know, why should we as a region have to fight so hard for what metropolitan Sydney seems to be granted at, at a whim almost? And that's just my perspective again, from someone that's lived in the regions. Uh, you know, it just doesn't seem like, uh, that it's a level playing field. Probably doesn't answer your question, but it gave me a chance to have a rant.
Mr Hartley, did you have anything to, uh, to add from the financial perspective at all?
All right, could you repeat the question, sorry?
Just in terms of, particularly with your infrastructure base and that whether, when the state government's considering your financial feasibility, your management plans or a special rate variation, that they're taken adequately into consideration? And that profile you've got, that aging infrastructure is actually captured in terms of the considerations?
From a financial perspective, I understand the, when we reply for special rate variation, you need to take into consideration the capacity of the community to pay. That's important. However, from a Lismore City Council, as I said, we're a regional council. We have lots of roads that go up into the hills. We have lots of roads on the flood plain. We have lots of roads up in Gunelva, which don't actually, um, aren't packed by the roads, um, the floods. So that needs to be considered when we actually have the rate peg set. It really does. Because again, we're different to, say, a Ballina, and I'm not trying to compare Ballina to us, who are a very constricted area. Uh, all the rate payers are together. You get much better, you know, smaller rate pay, but rate base is what I'm trying to say. We have a lot of farm areas, which, you know, you have one rate payer on a large rural road. So we don't get that sort of money to generate to renew that road as, uh, you know, the metropolitan areas or the more consolidated areas. So again, our needs are different to those areas. So the short answer is, yes, I believe they need to be taken into consideration. Are they? No, I don't believe they are.
Uh, thanks so much. If I could just finish with one last very quick follow up in the minute we have left. Um, you mentioned the rate peg, um, again in your answer. Could we provide a rate peg within a range to give councils that flexibility? When you talk about not the one size fits all, would, would a range be better?
Off the top of my head, any, any, any variation would be good. However, based on experience, um, all councils will go to the maximum simply because of the costs involved in delivering services. Even if you provided a range, I think it would be unlikely a council would go to the lower end. That's just my opinion. Um, but again, it depends on the level of service the community wants.
Thanks so much for your time and giving evidence today. Um, well, any questions that were on notice, um, the secretaryate will be in touch with you for answers there and you have 21 days to provide answers to the committee. Um, we'll now take a short break. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much and welcome to our next witnesses appearing today. Could I ask each of you to state your name and position title, starting from my left, and take either the oath or the affirmation, please? You'll need to press the button on the mic as well, apologies.
Not sure how that stays on. So Paul Hickey, Ballina Shire Council, General Manager, affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Robert Musto, Richmond Valley Mayor, the affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare the affirmation that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Can I just keep it on there? Vaughn McDonald, General Manager, Richmond Valley Council, the oath. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Would any of you like to start by making a short opening statement? We might start with Ballina, if that's all right? Would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Certainly. Well, thank you for the invitation today. Ballina Shire Council is a high-growth council on the far north coast, so we're dealing with a wide range of population growth and infrastructure pressures. We're also a low-rating council, so that whole financial sustainability, the financial model is very important to us. The council's actually done a lot of entrepreneurial activities over the last 40 years, a lot of land development and so forth. That's helped to subsidise our rate income, but the worry is we're coming to the end of those assets, sales and so on. So I guess I've been in and had a lot of government for 45 years myself, my background's in finance, so I've got a lot of experience in this and I've been through a lot of reviews as well, so very keen to provide some feedback. We have got some ideas, Vaughn and I, from a general manager perspective, are fairly well on the same page, even though our councils are fairly different, so very keen to provide some input and hopefully we can make some serious change to the overall sustainability of local government. Thank you.
You have to hold it, okay. Yes, I'll just add to that. Mr Hickey's absolutely right, we're experiencing population growth and of course since the Covid, the floods, the droughts, bushfires, the whole lot, we are facing increasing pressure of businesses wanting to move to Ballina Shire. We have the airport there and of course that's very resource-intensive. Trying to fund that and keep that operating is a major challenge, but really pivotal to the whole region. So we are facing a lot of financial pressures, but at the same time, we have a community, a lot of elderly community that live in their homes and they may be worth a million or $2 million, but they cannot afford to pay more than $80 a week for their land rates, plus all the other rates and charges with it. So it's a real challenge for them and in my personal opinion, I don't think they should be made to move out of that family home if they don't want to because that definitely doesn't give them, I guess, the quality of life that they have come to enjoy and worked hard for.
Thank you. I'll just go. Opportunity to make a submission. The subject of this inquiry is a longstanding issue within local government sector and there have been numerous attempts to address council's sustainability and funding challenges over the past 10 years, from the independent review of local government in 2013 to the 2016 IPART review of reporting and compliance burdens and the current review of the rating system. Also previously, the Percy Allen Inquiry and T-Corp Review of Financial Sustainability of Local Government. Councils have repeatedly raised the same concerns and the government respond has largely failed to achieve meaningful and positive change for local communities. Hopefully, from this inquiry, there will be some beneficial outcomes for our rate payers.
No, I don't know. I think the mayor's covered it, so I think obviously I've been involved myself. As Paula mentioned, 20 years in state government and now almost 10 in local government, so I've sort of been on both sides. I was actually the project manager for that local government review back in 2012, 13, so have been sort of through the Percy Allen Inquiry, the T-Corp processes. There is a lot of discussions, there's a lot of challenges with the financial sustainability of local government. We're a council that bid inland compared to Ballina, a bit smaller, a lower socio-economic community, so what our community is able to pay in rates and charges is something that our council's certainly well aware of, but we also face some significant infrastructure challenges, especially with critical infrastructure like sewage services, water treatment plants and roads. And some of those are intergenerational facilities, sewage treatment plants, you'd like to build them so they last 100 years, yet we can only borrow funds for 20. And so that certainly limits our ability to fund that ourselves and that's why we end up relying on support from the federal or state governments. So I mean, that's just one example that I could put on the table to start with. Obviously, a number of examples are in our submission. So yeah, I'm open to questions and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you both. And we'll now move to questions. The committee's opted to take free-flowing questions, so I'll hand over to indicate to my colleagues. Dr Amanda Conne, thanks.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm not used to having to push the button. Thank you all so much for making time to give evidence today. My first question is similar to a question I asked in the previous session and it's also come up in Ballina's written submission, which is about the increased demand from community for social and community services provided by council. That's something we've heard from rural and regional councils across the state and I understand that there would be even more demand in the Northern Rivers region post floods for those social and community services that council provides. What's the impact of that demand on your budget? Are your income-raising measures sufficient to cover that increased demand for services?
Social and community infrastructure is a direct cost shift across to local government from state government. It's something that local councils just simply cannot afford to provide social housing and this sort of community infrastructure. I mean, we know that sporting facilities are really important to our community and we've got things like pickleball, the fastest-growing sport in the world, and our community just can't get a game. They've got 400 members in Ballina, hundreds in Alstomville, and whilst they've just got eight lovely new courts in Alstomville, it's not enough and we're constantly under pressure to provide these sorts of facilities. The homeless people, I was at the emergency department only a week ago doing some hospital visits and there was a gentleman there with his ankles just so swollen. He lives in his car and he can't put his feet up because he's homeless. It's just, we're in a crisis situation with homelessness, yet we have a lot of lazy Crown land assets that need to be used for the community, whether that be housing, whether that be community facilities. There is so much more that the Crown could be doing to assist council in providing that infrastructure. And we know that we get charged lease fees, like our library, our visitor information centre, both sitting on Crown land, and we get charged enormous rents for those. It's gone from peppercorn rents now to commercial rents and simply it's putting more and more pressure on our budgets that we're at breaking point. Our general fund's in deficit. We know our community can't afford to pay more rates, so we're in a real dilemma as to how to provide what our community needs and exactly what more can be done.
I'd just add to that from a Ballina Shire perspective. As the community grows, I mean, we've grown from say 25,000 to 50,000 over the last 25 years. The community's evolved and really council for a long time, because we had a low average rate income rate base focused entirely on roads and key infrastructure, but as the community evolves, more people move from cities and so forth, that demand for those social services grows and people see a gap, sometimes two, in state government services. So in the end, the councillors get pressured for actually to expand the council services. So all the time we're getting that increased pressure, whether it's CCTV, social housing, all those different pressures that council now gets because the state government, from my perspective, isn't delivering enough of those services in the local community. So it's that fine balance between our fixed revenue base versus that extra demand for services. So you're under constant pressure to try and get that balance or try and support our community where we can because we are seen as that level of government closest to the community. So it's hard because you're under pressure, but you want to deliver those services, but you don't have the rate base or income to actually provide those services.
But I indulge just for a moment. General Manager did mention the CCTV cameras. Now, we know we've had a spike in crime, that's no secret whatsoever. Community are doing what they can by neighbourhood watch-type actions with an app, but we just recently put $30,000 on the table to do a scoping study for CCTV cameras for our community. Now, only to find that the funding stream from this government was axed in January this year for CCTV cameras and graffiti. So now there is no funding stream that we can apply to try and help New South Wales Police do their job.
If I can just pick up on that and sorry to Amanda, to Dr Conne, but in terms of that you outlined in your submission that that was a request of the New South Wales Police for you to install that, so did the police, how was that request received in terms of the New South Wales Police requesting council to install CCTV?
No, we worked with the police. We have a hotspot, a suicide spot in our Shire and the conversation started there on what more could we do to try and help the situation that we had in our Shire, which then led to main street CCTV cameras. They didn't request it. I worked with them and we just tried to unpack what more could we do to assist them with their work. And a lot of the communities do have cameras, we have none throughout our Shire.
Okay, thank you for that because, sorry, I was just taking that, I'd noted it in your submission because it seemed a bit bizarre to me that the police were requesting it of council, so thank you for clarifying that.
Sorry, I do have more questions. I was just getting back on my train of thought. This committee's previously had a number of hearings in Sydney, but this is our first hearing in a regional area and that gives us an opportunity to talk about water and sewer because obviously metropolitan councils don't have that responsibility. I understand that's been a significant challenge for Richmond Valley. Could you talk us through some of the challenges with your budget, particularly with your sewage treatment plants?
Yeah, I'll just make a quick comment and I'll ask the General Manager to speak on this, but just following up about the impacts on communities, of costs. A lot of the services we run are very expensive, but you can't charge for them. Could you imagine charging a child to go to the library to get a book? You can't do that. If we make our swimming pools cost-effective, the children wouldn't be able to afford to go to those. So we have to supply those services that come to a cost across the whole board, but the cost of those services are increasing dramatically and it's out of council's range for being able to support those things. But I'll get on the sewer and water, we have got a lot to say on that, so I'll ask the General Manager to take on.
Yeah, with, in particular, sewer, sewage treatment. So we have sewage treatment plant in Casino, almost 100 years old. It's done its job and a bit of damage in the flood in 2022 sort of brought that need forward. So we'd started the planning for that and as an example, it's at that time, the estimate was it was a $30 million project. As we got into the planning and as we've all come out of Covid and the floods, the cost has literally doubled. And so we're now looking at a $65 million investment to build a new sewage treatment plant for Casino. That's needed for the existing population, but it's also needed for the potential growth that we have with the regional job precincts, so that's an expansion of our industrial areas and also the potential that we have for a new 1500-lot residential subdivision just to the north-east of Casino, which, to support that and obviously that's flood-free land, which we all know, we do have a housing crisis on the Northern Rivers, so that would be a significant contribution. And we're working with the Reconstructional Authority through their Resilient Lands Programme to progress investigations for that. So that's one example. Now, 65 million is obviously beyond a council of our size. Our annual operating budget's 75 million, our capital programme's around 50 to 60 million, it will probably be a bit more than that as disaster recovery projects get added to that through the year. But 65 million, we've put 20 million in our long-term financial plan, but we are really reliant on, as is indicated in our submission, other councils are in the same situation, funding from programmes like the Safe and Secure Programme. But there's no certainty that we will get funding from that. We're also making applications. There's a federal government programme called the Regional Precincts and Partnerships Programme, so we've applied for funding to support our detailed design work, to get that as shovel-ready as we can. So that's on the sewer side. We've also got a project at Evans Head, which is funded 50/50 through the Safe and Secure Programme, but council will still be needing to find three or four million for that. We've also got work that needs to be done at our water treatment plant in Casino that will be supported by the Safe and Secure Programme. And the reason those two are supported is that they were deemed higher-risk projects, they're at the highest level of risk and the Casino one, at the time that assessment was done, which was pre the 2022 flood, the Casino one was the next level down and so we hadn't secured that funding. So obviously sewage treatment, water supply are critical for any community and that's a challenge that we face. We're working hard, we've put a project team in place, we're funding it through our reserves to be as ready as we can be, that hopefully we do secure some funding and we can get on and build it because we're looking to need to build that to commence within the next two years, which is ambitious for that sort of infrastructure. So that's, I suppose, an example of the challenge we've got around water and sewer.
And I'll just add a quick comment on to the sewer and water. A lot of the inquiry areas where you'll go to, they'll have one sewage treatment plant. We have four because we have villages and towns and everything. So when you're doubling up four times to treat waste, it comes at an enormous cost. It's not just centralising, you're focusing in one area. That's just the rural facts of life that we live under.
Just water and. Currently, we have to keep separate funds for water and wastewater. Now, in Ballina, we've got a recycled water system whereby sewage is recycled for use on lawns and those sorts of things. And it's this whole integrated water cycle management where really our water and wastewater is really integrated and stormwater as well. I really think you really should change the Low Government Act to allow water, wastewater and stormwater to be treated as one business unit because if you're looking at it holistically, it's about making sure you get that whole integrated water cycle management strategy in place. And currently, there's a stormwater charge that the state government put in place nearly 20 years ago, $25. That's never been indexed since then, which was a good idea at the time, but never been indexed, so we can't get any more money out of that. So really by just consolidating, putting stormwater with water and wastewater in one fund would actually give some more economies of scale too, to allow some of those bigger projects to proceed. So I just think, when we look at our business in Ballina, sometimes it's hard to work out is that really a water activity or a wastewater because you're recycling wastewater for water and it becomes that sort of argument and I just think it's just a little bit crazy really. In the end, they're one business activity, we're trying to make it holistic and I just think it's something you should have a look at from an overall financial management perspective.
Just as an example, Paul mentioned the stormwater levy, so $25 hasn't changed. And so in the Richmond Valley context, that brings in annually at the moment $200,000. We're, just as one example, at the moment, we're doing a project in Evans Head to take the pressure off the CBD in heavy rain events. And so that's putting a large stormwater pipe next to the CBD to basically to catch the water before it goes into the shops, which does happen at times in flash flood events, but that's a $2 million project. And so it just highlights, we need stormwater infrastructure, but we don't have the adequate funding and that levy's a good idea, it just needs to be more and certainly really should have been indexed from the time that it was introduced. So I think it's a good example of a good idea that hasn't changed for the best part of 20 years in the amount that it's levied. So its effectiveness has obviously just declined over that period of time.
One more question, if I may. My last question is about climate change and I'm interested in the level of support that councils have to actually build or maintain infrastructure to take into account the adaptation that we need for climate change.
Could I answer that? I'm the Chair of the Australian Coastal Council's Association and I can tell you now that there are councils around the country that just cannot adequately do what's necessary to protect their communities from rising sea levels as far as mitigation goes, erosion and everything that goes with it. We have a coastal hazard study line drawn in a part of our Shire at Lennox Head and we need to be doing works there to mitigate, to extend our revetment wall, but we don't have the funds to do it. So it's a bit of a wing and a prayer. Back in the day, there was an old tea tree wall that was established by the community and we did some investigations to see if it was still there. We found it was. Is it still doing a job? Well, I'm not sure if we worked out whether it was or it wasn't, but we know that we need to extend that revetment wall in order to protect two of our main streets that run through Lennox Head. So is there adequate funds in regard to protecting communities from the effects of climate change? We know our climate is changing, so the answer is certainly not. We just can't do those works that are desperately needed.
Probably the short answer is we can always do with more funds.
Some detail would help us here.
No, no, but I was just thinking of an example. So I was talking about the sewage treatment plant and we had our, we've just done our flood modelling right across the Richmond Valley, first time it's been done as a holistic approach. We had that model, it was actually due to go to council in the March of when the 2022 floods hit, so it didn't get there. But as a result, obviously of the floods, we had to go back and recalibrate and test those models. And so that delayed that for a good year, but what it's also done is raised the levels because obviously with those floods, building those into the averages and the models, it goes up. And so what that is meaning is that at the moment, we're looking at the site that we've got for the sewage treatment plant and it's now looking like we're going to have to raise the level of how we build that. So that requires more fill on the site and so figures that I've seen recently is that that can be anywhere from three to five million dollars just to get that site up to the level at which we need for that to be built. So I mean, that's one example. The other example that we've got is, I touched on the stormwater, and so with Casino, Casino is a town that in the last few years is getting more intense rainfall events that is leading to flash flooding within the Casino township and our community is certainly agitating strongly for some solutions to that. And so we've had work done on our, Casino has a town drain that obviously catches the water and then it goes into the river, but it needs more capacity and one of the options is a new outlet in effect from the town drain, a new outlet, different pathway to the river. But again, that's going to cost us, it'll be at least five million to just do one of those options. So climate change, there's clearly changes with more intense rainfall events, that's probably the main issue we have, say with Casino and even with the Evans Head example. So it's definitely increasing the costs of the projects that we'd like to do, but some of those projects, we will be reliant on securing grant funding to be able to deliver them.
Can I just add to that, if you don't mind, thanks? I'm the Chair of Rous County Council and councillor Cadwallis is deputy chair of that. So this might find a bit hard to believe, but in 1984, the council received $84,600 for flood mitigation works in the drains. We do water, weed control and a bit of flood in the lower Richmond. So they received $84,600 in 1984 and 40 years later, that is still $84,600. It's never been indexed over those years. On many occasions, Rous has requested that that be looked at, it's always been denied and the figures that they've been equated is it's cost Rous over those years, over $4 million if it had have been indexed. So you can imagine 40 years ago, $84,000 was a lot of money, you could do a lot of drainage work. Now, $84,000 would be one man for a year going out. It's just, it can't be managed and that refers to, back to your, about climate change. We all know that it's changing and that we're going to get more flood events and we need those drains to be cleaned out to get the water off those farmland and that's more for the rural people, it's farmland, so they can get on with their life and get back to crop production, we all need to eat. So that's just one example of the cost, the cost outstripping the supply of the money.
And if I may, I might just add to that as well. That 80. It would cost $103 million to replace those assets and those assets are 125 kilometres of drains plus 65 kilometres of ex-drainage union drains, 73 kilometres of levies, 41 levies, not including Lismore levy, 40 culverts, 759 floodgates, including 100 tidal flushing gates and 10 fish gates, 68 outlets, 3.8 kilometres, 4.7 kilometres of pipes, 18 bridges, 181 metres of guardrail, two weirs and 1.8 kilometres of bank protection. Does that say it all or what?
Sounds like one person can't do that.
Or for $84,000 a year.
And to pick up on that point, I think that Ballina in your submission, you talk, and I've got to say, going through all of the submissions of different councils, everyone brings up something different, it's amazing. But in terms of the charges that are outside of the IPART process and largely within DPE and I think you mentioned one of those in terms of stormwater previously, but things which are set at a point in time, but then aren't updated as well. So somebody's got to pick up the slack somewhere and it's typically council. What do you see that we could be doing there? And I pick particularly Mayor Cadwalla, that in terms of what you said at the beginning as well, we do need to be concerned about the ability of our residents to be able to pay for it as well. So where do you see there being the ability for some of those charges to be revised or potentially to be indexed and how do you see that as being potentially met in terms of those costs?
There's a range there. So the stormwater's the first one, we've talked about it a few times. So ideally, I'd see that as part of the water and wastewater, where in the end, the council set their own water and wastewater charges based on you must spend that money on the activity, so as long as you've got that balance there, council makes a decision, that's the stormwater. The planning fees, that's always been the issue, well, they've been set by state government right across the state. The planning fees, that's always been the issue where they've been set by state government right across the state, weren't indexed for a long time again. They went up seventeen percent last year after many years. But again, you know, a planning assessment in Ballina with your environmental constraints, flood mitigation, everything else is often different to maybe somebody out. Further west and so forth, a lot more, you know, sometimes there's more complexity. I feel like you need a range of fees, so maybe a minimum fee and a maximum fee. So at least the council can then make a decision. Are you a pro development council that wants to subsidize the planning process? Or do you want to try and charge a more fuller cost? So I think you'd have a range of fees there. So it was a planning fees, a stormwater charge, and then I get back to rate pegging after that. So I think I think that range is maybe a better option where councils have more control over their own communities. They can make a decision as to. What is our community prepared to pay? Do they want a low fee or do they want a higher fee? At least some indexation and some range to actually give give the council a decision making part of the as part of the process.
So I think you put in your submission that it's an accumulated loss to Ballina Council of thirty million dollars over the last fifteen years. Is that something that Richmond Valley would have a similar perspective on in terms of? The freezing or capping of those charges or non-indexation that that would be costing you about ten percent? I think you put it as ten percent of your rate revenue. Would you think it'd be a similar sort of field?
The only thing I had there too is development contributions. Sorry, I left off development contributions. Yeah, sorry about that. So, yeah, they were capped in two thousand and ten or eleven at twenty thousand. And, you know, to keep housing affordable. And as I might have written in there, I've said a few times. A block of land in Ballina Shire might have been seventy thousand back then when we had twenty thousand. Now a block of lands. Something, you know, it's unaffordable. It's eight hundred thousand. So it hasn't helped that affordability. But in the end, councils haven't been able to deliver in high growth areas infrastructure because you haven't had that developer contribution coming in. So when you add the developer contribution with the planning fees, the stormwater charges and everything else, that makes a big difference for a high grad council like Ballina.
And of course, that cost has to be passed on to the rate payers. And as Mr. Hickey pointed out earlier, Ballina Council's been a highly entrepreneurial council through successive councils. But it's all coming to an end and we we don't have any more land to develop, any more land parcels. So we're getting to the pointy end of now affordability. And as I said, our general fund's in deficit. We've got some hard decisions to make, but at the same time. Our the affordability of our community is not there, particularly after the events of the last few years. It's put enormous stress and pressure on our communities. So we're in a very difficult financial situation.
We'd certainly, you know, I haven't done the done the same figures that my colleague Paul has. But but we face the same thing. Other examples, so for example, companion animals fees. You know, they're they're introduced, you know, way back, ninety eight, I think, and they hadn't changed for a long time. And we don't, you know, the the work that we have to do around the regulation of of companion animals. The funds that we get back in from registrations just doesn't cover it. So that's, you know, that's one. Another example where we have to do things, but we don't get the the funds back in to cover it. And, you know, it's 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 across the board, but also, you know, again, for us as a as a lower socio-economic community, you know, we have to be mindful of that. But what we have done at Richmond Valley, we were quite a low rating council. And we've just come out of, this is the end of the first financial year where we haven't had what's called a special rate variation in place. We had one for nine years. So initially, we had one for five years. I think over that five year period, it increased our rate revenue by about thirty four percent. And then for the for the four years, it was five and a half percent each year. And so that has enabled Richmond Valley to to catch up in the level of rates that we we levy. So, you know, our budget for the next financial year operationally is seventy five million. Our rating revenue is seventeen million. You know, so it highlights, you know, people often think that rates is our biggest source of revenue. It's not. Rates is just that, it's around twenty percent for us. We then rely on waste charges. And we've touched on in our submission that the waste levy and the impact that has that, you know, now people are paying north of three hundred dollars per tonne. To to, you know, take waste to a landfill and a big proportion of that is is the waste levy. And how that continues to increase and we get less than twenty, we as in local government, get less than twenty percent of that back. So, you know, there's a range of examples that we have where, I think it's for me, it's about more autonomy. You know, in some ways, the special rate variation process, which is regulated by our part now and there's a process we have to go through. That just should be business as usual for a council, you know, similar to we touch on the the South Australian approach. It's up to the council. You're autonomous, your councillors are elected by the community. They need to make decisions in line with their community expectations. And if they fall out of step with their community, at at the next election, they some or or all might, you know, face that consequence. Same as what happens, you know, at state and federal levels. So I think that that autonomy, we know it's it's a rate pegging has been an issue. You know, in my whole career and, you know, New South Wales and Victoria are the only states that still have it. I really do think it's something that needs to be looked at. It gets talked about, but it's a it's, yeah, it's a big decision. It's going to be a big change when it's, you know, it's been in place for a long time. But I think well, you know, a well-developed, solid basis for that change. Would be a big step in putting that responsibility on to local government, I think, you know. And and part of the reason that some of these things are there is because sometimes local government doesn't get everything right. But often laws are made and charges and restrictions are put in place. Because of a couple of bad circumstances when, you know, we all know at the moment, there's a hundred and twenty eight councils in New South Wales. So. Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Just one quick follow-on question, then I'll hand to the Chair. Just on the back of that, what's rate revenue as a percentage of the revenue for Ballina Shire Council?
Of our operating budget, so. So, yeah, our rate base is about twenty seven million off the top of my head, out of about ninety five million, sort of. So around that twenty four, twenty five, something around there.
So not dramatically different from Richmond Valley, so.
No, I think percentage wise, you know.
Pretty similar.
I mean, basically, Volden always used to have a little competition about how he had the lowest average rates in the region. And he's now overtaken us with his special rate variation. So, yeah, we're both low-rating councils that way.
Thank you.
Can I just make a quick comment about just local government, that state government's policies, that how it has effects on our community and council? So. You have our submission and it's it's about the new interment industry scheme. And that scheme was just, it's it's bought in. And it directly taxing the bereaved a hundred and fifty six dollars per burial for the privilege of being regulated. And required local governments to collect the process, the payments at our cost. The tax was imposed with no prior consultation and only three months' lead time for introduction. As a result, local councils who were finalizing their twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budgets. Have had to absorb the cost of the increase to these fees to meet the new requirements. Richmond Valley Council will have to increase its cemetery charges by fifteen percent. And this is on grieving families. And I'll be honest with you, as mayor, I'm embarrassed by that. I really am. I just think it's unfair. People are going through grief and here we are having to whack it up fifteen percent. By legislation from the state government and we're at the front. So you know who cops all the flak? It's council.
And I'd just like to agree with councillor Musto about that as a civil celebrant that buries people. I'm at the coalface of what these extra charges are doing, which we have to pass on to, again, our rate payers. There's one figure here, though, that council, we have forty percent of the costs and only three percent of income through our rates. And of course, we have no certainty that we're going to get the grant funding needed for our projects. Like a community centre that we have on the plateau, desperately needed. But it would be throwing good money after bad, putting a new roof on it because it's had its well and truly used by date. And it was used as an evacuation centre during the floods. Our airport, where we lost the funding and had to loan fund it to to reinforce the runway and lighting. That that was a grant that was promised, but then we lost the lion's share of it. So we had to fund that because it's so important to the region. And just if I may touch on water security, with our population growth, particularly in Ballina. Rous County Council is the is the water supplier here for the four constituent councils, which is Lismore. Ballina, Byron and Richmond Valley councils. Now, we are running out of water and only because it has kept draining. We're not on severe water restrictions. So we are in desperate need of funding to continue our investigative studies. For our future Water Strategy twenty sixty. And that that's of critical importance that we have enough water for our growing communities.
Thank you. I wanted to pick up on, I think, something Mr. McDonald, you were saying earlier in terms of. Rates and rate pegs and 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 the like. And we we talked earlier about whether a range would be appropriate, noting the comments from Mr. Hickey. How do we ensure that council will set a rate that the community can afford to pay?
I mean, that's really the sort of the fundamentals with the integrated planning and reporting process. Is that, you know, a council, a newly elected council goes out in their first nine months, consults community, sets a new community strategic plan. Sets a delivery program and goes through, you know, a thorough consultation process. And 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 in doing that, needs to put out options around what their what the financial models are. And therefore, what what the rate, what rate income is required. So I think there's the the integrated planning and reporting process, we all are required to to implement and and have now been doing for since two thousand and eight. You know, I think most of us are pretty good at it and it should and it's the model that obviously the IPART process does focus on as well. So I think, you know, it's about, in some ways, it's about giving local government the trust. To take ownership of those decisions and take responsibility for. Good engagement with the community. I mean, you you're never going to get a hundred percent satisfaction from your community when you're looking to increase, you know, a charge or a rate. But if you go through a good process and you do, you know, good surveys, these days, we're doing phone surveys of. You know, that are that are well-founded and they inform those decisions. And in our case with the special variations, we had the support from our community. And, you know, our budget that went through last night, we had four submissions. And they weren't, they were specifically to one facility. And that's not uncommon in the Richmond Valley, is that those plans are clear, the the measures are in place. And then importantly, we have to deliver on that. So I think that's the other thing is, you know, you you asking people to pay for things. You then have to make sure you're delivering what what you say you're going to do. So to me, you know, it it comes down to trust and putting that responsibility on each elected body to make those decisions. And then they will be and should be held accountable by their communities. And whether there's a, you know, whether there's an option for, you know, a range or a or an indicative, you know. Rate peg as as a transition step, you know, that. But again, and I was going to comment on on the interment side, is that I think it's an example where sometimes. Policies get made because something's happened in the metropolitan area, which is where I understand the the issues around interment have come from. But they get imposed statewide and then we, as a regional rural council, have to comply. When if you asked our community about our our burial services, I'm pretty confident ninety eight percent say we run a good show. You know, they're well-presented, well-maintained. We really care about how that service is delivered. Yet now we've got this additional cost burden for really no change in outcome for the community. So sometimes that that side of things, yeah, policies for some sections of local government. You know, have a have a valid reason for being, but they get put across the whole one hundred and twenty eight and we sort of, sometimes it's like, you know, you sort of suffer the consequences.
Thank you. So, sorry, Mr. Hickey, did you have something to add?
Yeah, it's, I mean, I guess I've been thinking about rate pegging for a long time and looked at all the reviews and that sort of stuff. And I accept that maybe it won't disappear. So if it's not going to disappear, what can we do? I will say, I part from my perspective, done a very good job since I've taken over the process, you know, I was around when the minister determined it and. That became political sometimes. So I'm happy with what IPART does. They've reviewed it. They've tried to do the best they can. I think that's been good. My worry is that it's the power of compounding. So again, I do a lot of benchmarking with our neighbours. You know, Tweed's got an average residential rate of nearly seventeen hundred, ours is twelve hundred. So Tweed gets four or five percent, they get an extra forty dollars, we get an extra twenty dollars. You multiply that by eighteen thousand assessments, we're falling behind even further each year. So that's my worry. You know, if you're a small business and you it's cheaper, you might last for a while, but can you keep on going? And that's the whole thing. So I feel like there should be some sort of benchmark where maybe if you are a low-rating council, you've got that option to actually shift up. Maybe towards some sort of benchmark, affordability benchmark. So maybe you don't have to go through the entire. Special rate variation process because that does get politicized and creates a lot of angst. You know, yet we increase our water and wastewater charges by a high percentage and we and nothing, there's no feedback sort of thing. So I just feel like there should be some sort of, I think IPART could do it. You get your comparable councils and those sorts of things. Look at the average rate for the councils, farmland, industrial and so on. And then try and have some benchmarks that a council could work towards. So at least you've got a little bit of room to move. You know, I'm talking from a Ballina Shire and probably Richmond Valley perspective here, where we are low-rating. At least we've got the option then to maybe move to a more affordable benchmark where otherwise, you know, it's that compounding issue. When you're compounding a bigger figure, it just gets further and further ahead and you fall further behind. So that's my worry. So some sort of two-tiered structure like that might be an option to consider.
Thank you. And I note the hybrid SRV model that you've mentioned in your submission. Thanks, Mr. Hickey. I just wanted to turn now to Richmond Valley, just with a couple of specific questions about your sort of unique circumstances. You're obviously impacted by flooding again last year. And in the last budget, so twenty twenty three, twenty four budget, you did forty million dollars of capital works. What were the challenges of making ends meet during that time?
Well, I think I think in the last, the last financial year, I think we ended up over fifty. And and I suppose the reason that happens is because of the disaster recovery funding arrangements that that we have to go through. To secure funding to recover our roads. So damage from floods for us was, you know, we estimated around a hundred and fifty million. Around a hundred million on our road network and fifty million on water, sewer and and other assets. So we're, we are, and and I must say that that. That funding's critical for us. You know, without that funding, you know, we probably wouldn't exist to recover from. And, you know, we're all, you know, we're all affected in the Northern Rivers, but obviously to different degrees. So that funding is important. The challenge for us with that is to secure the suppliers and the contractors. But also to work through the administrative processes that are required to get approval so that we can get on with that work. We've also tapped into a couple of other programs that were released that were Northern Rivers specific, of which we've secured funding for. Twin Bridges, the Tadam Bridges, we've secured around eighteen million to replace or or build new ones there. We've got some major culvert issues and all of those projects are being done to improve the resilience. So they're being raised, roads are being raised so that we're better prepared for future floods. So so we're in a position where we can deliver these these projects. You know, we're a council. It's over the last sort of eight or nine years, it's gone from a capital program of around eighteen to twenty million. To fifty and I think, you know, this financial year, we could potentially end up towards seventy or eighty. And then once we bring in, you know, a project like a sixty five million dollar sewage treatment plant. You know, we could be on beyond the hundred million in a financial year. So as a council, we have grown in our capacity and our capability. Some of that's on the back of the special rate variation and the additional revenue that we've we've gained from that. But what it's done is enabled us to do more, to deliver more projects. So, you know, big. So, you know, big reliance on grant funding, I'd have to say. So, yeah, because our rate income has just stepped up gradually, but our grant funding has been significantly increased through successful grant applications, but also that disaster recovery funding. So absolutely a reliance on that. And, but if that, and it is backing off, I'd have to say that the money isn't there. We all know that across all levels of government. So that's where we have to find, or that we have to find a programme that it fits or we have to find a way to self-fund it. And so back to that sewage treatment plant example, we can afford, we've estimated 20 million. But if, you know, in six to 12 months' time, we don't have any other contributions, we might have to make some really hard decisions about how else we can fund that because it's critical infrastructure. You know, the current one is, it's limping along, it is meeting standards, but, you know, it's a matter of time before we have to do something. And so that's our challenge, that we don't have that own source revenue capability that ideally we'd have so that we could build it ourselves. Because our community doesn't have that scale to be able to fund that amount of money in a short space of time.
Can I just comment quickly? I went up to Tweed and met with Minister Jackson about our water and sewer and said we had $20 million to throw in towards a 65. And her comment was that's a bit unusual in local government sometimes because lots of, on lots of occasions, the facilities are dilapidated that much. They have to be done because they're affecting the environment. We don't want to get to that level. We want to be responsible council, throw our money into the project, but we do need help because once you let a facility get to that level where it's affecting the environment, that's just negligent for your community. So we're responsible, but we need help to be able to do those things. And if we don't get that funding, it will come to that in another 10 years where it's critical for our environment, but we don't want to go down that path.
Yeah. In terms of the disaster recovery money that you mentioned, Mr. McDonald, did you put on extra staff with that disaster recovery money? And how has that impacted your overall headcount?
We do put on additional staff. So, yeah, it's certainly, you know, we have increased in full-time equivalents. One thing we have in our experience over the last 12 months is though, for that sort of work, there's definitely a benefit of utilizing your existing corporate knowledge. So having your existing asset properly involved in that. So we initially went to the model of bringing a fresh team, but it wasn't working and it wasn't their fault. It was just that they don't know the network, they don't know the systems, they don't know, didn't know government as well. So that becomes a challenge where you almost got to pull some of your business offline, which is what we've done. And so, yeah, it has stretched us. The contribution towards that disaster recovery is funded. So the, you know, the staff and the project management in most cases does get funded through that scheme, but it does leave you short in your core business. And so that's where, you know, we've had to recruit and build the business elsewhere. So, yeah, it's certainly, yeah, it stretches us. You know, it's been challenging, although I think we're an organisation now that we've sort of been facing natural disasters since the Black Summer bushfires in 2019, which sort of kicked off up here and then headed south. Yeah, and we've had a number of floods since. So I think that's another point that I think we make in our submission is that we need to get to a funding model that takes into account the ongoing need for resilience funding. And that's where some of the conversations around betterment. So the disaster recovery is about fixing the asset back to the state that it was in. But there is more of an appetite now to be able to do a better job, to improve the resilience so that the next time there's a similar event, that the aim is that the asset holds up. So, you know, we are, we're certainly making progress in a number of areas and we just need to keep, you know, keep that in mind around betterment and resilience.
Just a quick comment on the staffing side of things. A lot of these projects, and we're the same as every other council, you haven't got the internal staff to be able to do a lot of them. We've got a landslide, it's $15 million and they're boring peers down 10 metres. So you have to get the people with that expertise. And like the general manager mentioned earlier about the bridges at Tatum, $18 million. We haven't got a bridge building department like most councils. So you get those people that, you know, that's their expertise in that job. So you have to have them in. So we did create positions, but on a lot of the outside work, you just can't do it. It's impossible.
Could I just add to that? The severe staff shortages that councils are facing. And the major impediment is that state government are taking the staff, paying them more money, particularly since the disasters that we've had. And we can't compete with that. That's our biggest dilemma. It's not just skill shortages, it's labour shortages all round. So that's really impacting us severely.
And just to support that that's happened at Richmond Valley, we've lost a lot of staff over to the government departments.
Is there an increasing role for apprentices and apprenticeships in local council? Just take into consideration what you've said.
We are always doing that. We have a lot of trainees. We have supported workers too, that work in our nursery in the Shire. So we're really on top of that, but I don't think we could take on any more really. We're probably at capacity in that area.
Yeah, look, we've been doing apprenticeships and traineeships for 10 years. Actually, when we implemented what's called the youth employment scheme, we actually won the, I think it was a statewide trainee programme award. I think we're up against at the time was finalists were Westpac and McDonald's. So we got that gong back when it started and we've built on it from there. I think we've employed, we'd bid about 120 employees through that period of... And a lot of those employees stay with us. It's absolutely what we've decided is the best way. Let's grow our own. So it's keeping, well, it's providing employment opportunities for young people in our area. But it also enables you to develop staff that are in tune with your culture and your expectations. It is definitely the best way to do it. So we're big supporters. And the other thing that we do, in particular, well, the Richmond Valley has a strong indigenous population and so our employees are at a level equivalent to the percentage within our community, which is around the 7% mark. So we use programmes like the Elsa Dixon Programme to provide those opportunities. And, yeah, so it's definitely something we do as much as we can. A lot of that has been supported with funding through the years to get people through traineeships and scholarships and others.
Just in the minute we have remaining, we heard from Parramatta Council in earlier evidence in this inquiry that the cost of a playing field could be upwards of a million dollars more if constructed by council rather than a private contractor. Do you agree and is that your experience up here in the Northern Rivers?
Through, oh, sorry, not through the mayor, I'm sorry. Yeah, through the mayor. No, I don't agree with that. You know, I think from Ballina Shire and I'm sure Richmond Valley's the same. I think in regional councils, you've got that local community, you've got people who want to make a difference to the community. I think, you know, we often benchmark ourselves against the private sector. We do a lot of tentering for contracts. Sometimes we'll build our own roundabout, sometimes we'll get someone else to build it. So I would not agree with that statement at all.
Absolutely not agree. We've actually improved, I'd say, a couple of, what have we done? Be half a dozen sporting fields. Previously in the Richmond Valley, we didn't have any irrigated sporting fields. We now have irrigated rugby league fields, soccer fields, and we've just done another one. We've actually done one in Woodburn recently, which was supported by funding linked to flood recovery. And the way we've done that is actually most of those have been delivered by our own team. We use a local irrigation firm that puts the irrigation system in. We get the turf out of a turf farm in Grafton. So, no, we've delivered those very economically. And, yes, I'm not sure what's happening in Parramatta.
Thank you. Thank you so much for making time to give evidence to today's inquiry. Any questions taken on notice, although I don't know that there were any. But if there are any supplementary questions, the secretariat will be in contact and you'll have 21 days to respond. Thank you.
Thank you very much for making time for us.
Thanks. And it's appreciated that we can get our voice out there. And as I said earlier, there's been a lot of inquiries before. Hopefully out of this one, there will be some positive outcomes. So thank you.
Welcome to our next witnesses. I've just temporarily taken over sharing. Thank you so much for making the time to give evidence. Could each witness, please, starting from my left, state your name and position title and take either the oath or the affirmation?
Thank you. Esmeralda Davis, Director Corporate and Community Services at Byron Shire Council. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
When in Lismore? You do have to keep your finger on the button the whole time.
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
General Manager, I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Would you like to start by making an opening statement?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Cohen. Okay, so I'll just open really by probably restating points that we made in our submission as a council. I guess firstly I'll mention that regional councils face significant challenges in funding infrastructure and services compared to metropolitan counterparts, primarily due to the smaller rate base combined with a larger geographical base. Certainly in Byron, that plays out with many smaller but significant towns in our Shire, even compared to other regional towns, we probably have six, seven, regional Shires, we probably have six, seven or eight significant towns that all need to be well-connected. Also, as a coastal council, you face further challenges around erosion and in particular tourism and the impacts that that has without the ability to raise your own revenue from a broad-based tourism tax, for example, that would help to cover the costs that that visitation has. Visitation's great for the town in a lot of ways, but it's not great for council's finances. We don't have any means really, other than at the moment pay parking to levy costs or levy revenue from tourists. The primary revenue source for councils typically include rates, government grants, user fees and charges. But this over-reliance on rates does place significant pressures on rate payers. Byron Shire Council is already one of the higher-charging councils in our area. And with increases capped, we rely on special rate variations if we want to balance the books. That places an unreasonable expectation on us to be able to do that given the way that rate rises can be used in a political cycle to gain popularity, but, you know, by promising not to raise rates at the detriment. So the structure, if it relies on councils to raise rates in a SRV, the structure, it won't work in a broad-scale thing because of human behaviour and the like. We also have legislative restrictions, as I mentioned, in terms of the tourism levy, but also levies are also capped. For example, the stormwater management levy has been, was introduced, I think, in early 2000s and that's been capped ever since at $25. Not only have costs significantly increased in that time due to inflation, they've increased because of the way over-inflation increases in construction-type expenses. Grants that we receive from government are often insufficient to cover the costs of necessary infrastructure projects and service delivery. And as a result, we get an infrastructure backlog which results from years of under-investment and deferred maintenance. We contend that we need adequate and predictable funding allocations in order to deliver essential services, to maintain critical infrastructure and support economic development initiatives. Just in relation to the IPART review of the rate peg methodology, and I just want to single out that the idea of allowing councils to use the capital-improved value method to set the variable component of rates, I think would go a long way to alleviating some of the problems that I mentioned around the way that the current structure operates. And finally, it would be remiss of me not to mention the cost shifting from state and federal governments over the years, particularly in areas such as social services, emergency management, libraries and infrastructure maintenance, that has a significant impact on council finances. At the same time, I can say I personally witnessed increased expectation on council to step in where state and federal governments fail. I'll give you one example in the Byron Shire of, in the homelessness space, council employs two part-time homeless liaison officers. We do that because it's absolutely essential with the highest homeless rate in the state that we have that ability to reach out to people. Obviously, that is made harder given that there are often not the support services to provide to those people or certainly the housing pathways. But it is important that we remain connected and understand the extent of the problem and we've been doing that for several years now. I might leave it there, I think I'm over my three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I might start with a couple of my own questions and pass to my colleague. You mentioned in your opening statement the impact of tourism and I would imagine that you would have to be one of the top local government areas in the state for impact on your local services and infrastructure from the high rates of tourism. I was hoping you could expand in more detail and take it on notice if you need to, what those impacts are. Has there been any quantification of the impact of tourism on your services and infrastructure? And you also mentioned opportunities like something like a tourism levy. Have you got any recommendations for us about what that might look like or how it would work?
In relation to tourism, that's been something that's a bit of a wicked problem for the council for a long period of time. Obviously, the community is very... Obviously, the community is very reliant on the tourists and the businesses that operate on those visitors coming through. We've done some rough numbers over the years and it could be and what we have estimated is our costs could be anywhere from 20 to 30% more because we need to service the tourists that use our facilities, whether that be the the main beach at Byron, whether it's the amenities that we provide throughout the community, the different, you know, the roads or whatever that may be. So it's not a scientific number, but what that means is the community is required to find the funds to be able to support those visitors and the impacts it does have on 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 the on the assets that we do do provide and the reasons why many people come to the Byron Shire. As far as the levy, I'll hand back to the mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Arnold. Uh I guess I would just, I mean, it's pretty obvious that in terms of the car trips, we're talking, I think it's in a in a in a standard year now in Byronshire, we get something like 2 million visitors, you know, and and I think it's a million over a million day trips, day trippers, you know, so like obviously there is an there is an impact, a significant financial impact. In terms of the the levy, and I just want to make the point around tourism, we did a bit of a deep dive on the the economic benefits or not of tourism when we were advocating for the short-term rental cap. And it really became clear that whilst there was an initial benefit of tourism, by far and away, you you get better economic benefit from permanent residence in houses than you do from having tourists using houses as shared accommodation. You get that benefit 365 days of the year. And I just take every opportunity to reiterate that, particularly in the light of an upper house motion passed recently. And rings I on the numbers and it's pretty clear that that you get far better economic benefit from permanent residence and that's not even taking into account the jobs that don't get done currently because we haven't got people in houses. In terms of the levy abroad, like we don't, if we're going to do a levy, and we've had conversations with our local tourism board, Destination Byron, and and the support is there for that, and the support is there so that we can then in a in a broad-based way, not just as a bed tax, but as a any tourism business would 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 leave, you know, even a small levy, which could then go into nurturing the partly, obviously for amenities from a council point of view, but also to nurture the actual brand and to develop, if you like, the right type of tourism, the right type of visitation, respect for amenities, respect for the people, respect for the environment, and to enable us to allow people to to take a bit of Byron and the values with them when they leave. But that's certainly something that has support within our community from people you might not think that it did have support from, because they can see the benefit in having a Shire that's well-looked after. And 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 when you have that, you you are able to put your best foot forward in terms of how you treat your visitors.
Thank you. That was a very comprehensive answer. I might just ask one more question and then hand back to the chair. In your opening statement, you also talked about cost-shifting and the example of the the two staff you've employed to help support people experiencing homelessness. It's an extraordinary example of local leadership on a really complex issue. Are there other examples of cost-shifting you've got for us? I understand local government, New South Wales, has given us a very detailed submission trying to quantify cost-shifting at a state level, but it's helpful for us to flush out all these examples of various levies and other things.
I can give perhaps another example related to the post-disaster situation that we find ourselves in. So as you've heard from other speakers, the state government has previously funded some community recovery officer roles to support community recovery and social recovery post-disaster. The challenge with that funding model, of course, is that it doesn't allow for investment in preparedness or resilience activities. So one example of how our council in Byron has taken on, excuse me, part of that role that would normally sit with government is we are proposing to fund one position to focus over the next 12 months, focus on community resilience and recovery work to provide that continuity because we know from experience that it's not a matter of if another disaster is coming, it's a matter of when. And that disruption in funding that is attached to a post-disaster situation and doesn't allow the continuity of the great work and capacity building that's happening in the community is really disadvantageous to our community. So that is one example, and it's perhaps small, but really significant is council's investment in a dedicated position in the absence of state government funding.
Did you have questions?
Remember the button. Thank you for being here today. Just picking up on your submission, you say that there's some criticism in terms of the benchmarks that OLG use in assessing councils and their financial indicators, and you say that they don't encompass all relevant financial factors and focus too heavily on own-source revenue. Just interested in terms of that, what do you think OLG could be doing differently in terms of their assessment? What other factors should they take into consideration and how do you see something like that working?
I think the financial indicators are an interesting subject. In the last financial year, we achieved six of the seven indicators. We didn't achieve the the outstanding rate ratio. I think we were over 10%, so we failed to meet that ratio. So on the surface, it looks like we are performing really well. But if you look at our unrestricted cash, our balance at that point in time was zero because we'd used our reserves of unrestricted cash through the years of COVID to be able to address the additional costs that came to the community. So we ran down our reserves to be able to keep things happening. I think there's, it's an interesting question because the indication indicators may be different for a Western council to a regional council. And I think it's more about being able to provide the funding to ensure the stewardship of the assets that we have for the period that we need to to look after those. If you look at where we were probably six, seven, eight years ago, we had a very high own-revenue ratio. I think it was over 40%. And you you look at that and you compare that to Western councils and you say, great, what a good, good job. But when we went to the community to talk to the community about S an SRV, one of the things they pointed out to us is that we performed really badly in the the in obtaining in obtaining grants. So since that discussion with the community, we've increased our ability from probably two or three million per year on an annual basis, other than our roads grants, to somewhere around about 20 to 30 million. Of course, what that's done is reduced the ratio, our ratio on own revenue, made that look bad, but we're performing better in the expectations of the community. Because we're going to government, we're finding ways to source revenues outside the rate base. So I guess this reliance on ratios is 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 not telling the true picture. And in some ways, the true picture is how we are responding to the demands of the community in improving assets, doing renewals, providing the new facilities and the services that the community need. And I don't think that there's a black and white answer. Definitely, if you asked an accountant, they would say there is a black and white answer. But in a lot of ways, the answers come back through the engagement we have over things like our CSP and the and the our community satisfaction surveys and where they pull us short. In the case of Byron Council, when you go out, our top three issues aren't the top three issues of the normal regional rural councils. They are public transport, they are housing affordability and their infrastructure. So infrastructure is key in all those. But if you look at those first two, they're more a metropolitan council issue. So we're kind of like a regional council, but dressed up in a in in a different role. So but we wouldn't perform well if you looked at us under the under the criteria that you applied to a metropolitan council. So I'm not sure there's an easy answer to the question you've just asked, but I think it's it lies in the fact that we need to have a broader way of measuring the satisfaction, just not stick to the black and white indicators, but look at what the what the community has asked us to do and how we responded to that, such as go out there and make friends with state and federal government and get their grants revenue up from three or four million to to over 20 million over successive years for the last five, five, five or so years. So I'm not sure if that answers your question or if the follow-up there.
Look, I think it gives us further understanding and as you've outlined, it sort of is a disincentive, really, for councils to go out there and look for those alternative sources of revenue to be able to assist. You've also outlined in your submission in terms of that we should be considering regional economic disparities and their impact on the financial sustainability of councils. Just wondered if you could further expand upon what you, does that go partly to your point in terms of how you're a council that's maybe somewhat different from other regional councils around this area?
You've got all the good questions. I think when you talk about
I'm sure you've got all the good answers as well, so.
I think when you talk about regional disparities, it comes back to a little bit of what the mayor said in his opening statement is that we're a very small land area, but we've got five or six very diverse communities of interest which all have different ways on how they operate and how they communicate with the with each other. In the real terms, we've got a small rating base for the visitation that we have to support through 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 tourism. So the disparities that we have is our ability to raise additional revenues. At the moment, legislatively, we're restricted. One of the things that we have done besides the our SRV, which was over four years at seven and a seven percent over four years, which is about a 34% increase, we've looked at what is open to us to be able to fund things or get or great raise funds from visitors, and that has been paid parking. That has enabled us to probably deal with some of the inequities, which we talked about before, which is the fact that we're servicing a much higher community than than the 16,000 rate parcel, rating parcels of land that we that we have. So we are continually, I guess, as a regional council, the disparities are that the issues that we need to address are very broad from coastal erosion through to rough sleepers, the numbers that we have, which aren't common problems in 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 normal regional regional councils. The the fact that housing is at the top end of the range and, you know, finding homes for people that actually service the community, you know, provide the the coffees, et cetera, is becoming more and more difficult. With the price of fuel going up, you know, our service, a lot of people were coming from adjoining Shires, but it's becoming harder and harder, and we see that through our own own workforce. So it's a nice place to visit, but it's a difficult place to be able to live at times, to be able to meet those challenges in the cost of living.
Can I just add one thing into that? I just want to make mention of of housing, which is another area, you know, affordable housing. Now, I've been really clear that council has to step in and take a role in trying to develop housing, affordable housing. We provided a residential strategy that's well in excess of the required targets. And we're playing in that space because we feel we need to, but we've made a very clear distinction that social housing, we're happy to provide the supply, we're happy to provide the, you know, the the communications, the conversations with potential developers, but but state government needs to step in on the social housing front. I really want to just make mention in that regional disparity conversation around the Housing Australia Future Fund. And at the moment, regions are competing with the cities on that somewhat limited pie, using the same benchmarks, and we will lose out every time. And so there needs to be a regional allocation in the Housing Australia Future Fund if we're to, because, you know, we're growing as well and we've taken on a hell of a lot of people over the last few years through COVID, and that that trend continues. And and I think if we don't have that change to that fund, we will miss out. And and I'm sure you've seen the statistics around, you know, certainly Byronshire, but but all of the Northern Rivers and 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 regions really up and down in the state in in terms of the the housing metrics. And so if 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 there is going to be that federal and state funding, we just want to ensure if we're going to address those disparities that there is an allocation separately with separate criteria from metropolitan areas.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. And sorry, just noting, I was obviously absent for the start of your evidence. I apologize if the question that I asked has already been answered, and please just just tell me no if that's the case. The question that I have to ask for you specifically relates to tourism, and I note that you were sort of making comments to this effect when I re-entered the room. So again, apologies if you've already answered. Obviously, you are, as you've already articulated, host to tens of thousands of guests in your LGA every year. Are you able to take it?
So it's 2.2 million is the trend average, just so you're aware.
Well, there you go. So 2.2 million every year? Thank you for, thank you for that clarification. That's a lot more. 2.2 million guests every year. Are you able to take advantage of those visitors and build infrastructure to accommodate them? Or does that come at a net cost to your residents?
I guess we have natural advantages in terms of tourism. We don't really need to build things for them to come. And and I don't think we've ever really gone out there and promoted ourselves in any major way. We've had a few campaigns here and there, but it's just been pretty organic and and it's the natural assets that people are attracted to from the hinterland to the to the beach. But it's the impacts that to like anyone being in a Shire will use the toilets, will use the roads, will use the skate park, will use the facilities, and that obviously creates a burden in terms of the increased usage, requires more regular maintenance or replacement. And there is no mechanism that we have or that we're allowed to have that that would enable us, other than paid parking, which is specific in its way that it's, you know, allocated or can be spent. There's no mechanism that we currently have that that enables us to tax, for lack of a better word, that tourism and make them contribute to our Shire's finances. And I did say in the previous answer that we are very much in favour of a broad-based tourism levy. Our industry is in favour of that levy, and that could partially cover, you know, that impact on amenities and infrastructure, but also could be reinvested back into the tourism industry in terms of branding, et cetera, and ensure that Byron remains the premier beach destination in Australia and Noosa doesn't take over.
Just to clarify, would you say that it is at a net cost to your residents?
Oh, absolutely. Like with the, from a council point of view, there is no, there is no way that we are able to cover that cost currently.
And this tourism levy that you talk about, is that, is there any other ways that we can look at to fix what you have that is occurring? Or is that what you see as a solution?
You could narrow it down and do a bed tax, which is commonly cited by certainly many in our community, but I think it's fairer to 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 extend it to all things kayak lessons, surf lessons, you know, all tourism businesses. And and yeah, I I we we have been advocating for that for a long time. There's always been this reluctance, I think, for local government autonomy in that way, sort of like a philosophical problem with it. Maybe a trust issue, I'm not entirely sure, but, you know, give us a three-year trial and we will do you proud. It's 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 overseas, it's not, it's it's not groundbreaking stuff, you know, other other destinations do it. Obviously, every time for a first time an Australian goes to an overseas destination, pays a bed tax, you're a little bit like, oh, what's this? But, you know, the the rationale is clear and people generally support it once it's in.
I would just add to that, I guess what I'm hearing is a user-pay principle applying so that our residents are not burdened with the cost of supporting the visit the visitation in our Shire. So I don't have a particular answer as to how that could be administered, but a mechanism that's based on that principle, I think, would be helpful.
Thank you. Turning now just to look at the the rate peg, which has obviously been discussed through this inquiry, what alternate safeguards would be appropriate to ensure rate increases are affordable for our community?
I'll just quickly say that I think that using the I'll just quickly say that I think that using the capital improved value would be a good way to ensure that your, that the, the burden, if you like, of, of the increases falls with those who are most able to afford it. The only other point I'd make is give people the ability to offset or to borrow against their equity. For example, someone who's asset-rich and cash-poor, to offset that by, by having a, a loan that just sits there at low interest until such time as that property is sold. And then that loan would be, become payable on that increase in rates.
I just wanted to recognise that it's been my experience, the community are not well-informed or aware of council finances and it is a very complex area. So I think the capacity to pay is definitely a key consideration in terms of any rate levies. But I also, and we've seen it through special rate variations, if your community understand how the financial, the, the revenue is to be used and applied and they can link a direct benefit to themselves, that I think that would, that awareness will assist in any willingness to consider, I guess, contributing into council revenue in that way.
I think it was mentioned by the previous speakers before us and it's about trust and it's about having that relationship with your community. So we've done a couple of things over the last little while as part of the SRV. Women went to the community and we talked about raising additional revenue. And there was lots of, lots of things that were put forward. SRV was accepted, but people were also looking at other means and we got solutions such as the bed tax, toll gates at the, at the beginning, on either side of Byron. So everyone paid as they, they, they went, went in. But I think that what you need to be able to do is in those conversations, have, they have a conversation with the community about their expectations and what it is they expect. We, after the SRV, held a citizens' jury and that citizens' jury had 30 people, which were picked from across the Shire and they were from all spectrums of the community. And the issue was infrastructure and how should we deal with that? Should we be building new? Should we be doing maintenance or should we be doing renewals? And interestingly, the community came to the conclusion that the most important factor is safety and that should be the first investment by the council. So as part of that discussion, what we did is look at how we spend the SRV and how we spent the, 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 the pay parking money and other revenues we get. So our priorities are based on that conversation. So it's not necessarily a new roundabout, but it's fixing up the guardrail on the road that needs to be done. It's about the surface of the road, getting rid of the potholes and making it safe for, for, for people to, to, to travel along. And people accept that and they can see those differences and they can accept that their money is invested. I guess I've been around local government for a lot longer than anyone else in this room. My father was the Shire Clerk of Wellington Shire Council from the seventies through the nineties. And I was there in 1977 as part of a local government family in, I might've been in year 10 at the time, when on one side you had an Orange City Council raising the rates by upwards of 15% year in, year out and Dubbo City Council reducing their rates. The arguments, I guess, came around about the conversations with the community. Who was having those conversations? Were they meeting the needs of the community? And I guess my, 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 my philosophy is always that those conversations with community are, are, are key. They're important to building the trust, but they're also important to understanding what is important to them and how you should be investing that money. So I think through the integrated planning and reporting framework now, we've got the basis of doing that. And let's be frank, is sometimes those conversations aren't easy and they do have raised emotions. But having them is important, I guess, in the trust and understanding that what you're delivering is what people are expecting. And when you deliver what people expect, trust grows.
Just to follow on from that, you mentioned the IPNR framework, which we have heard again, a lot about in this inquiry. Using that as a, as a possible example of, of how we could use as a, as a tool, is there ways that we could better customise the rate peg for each council or look at providing a range for councils to, you know, select a certain amount to give them greater flexibility? Is that something that you would support or be interested in?
I guess the example that I just gave is a good reason why you need a range to work within. You know, you can't have people on one side reducing rates and people increasing rates. So in the IPNR document process, if, if there's an ability to have a revenue stream, to be able to show that you're raising revenues in a way to meet need, then I think that's important. Again, I was at, at Tenerfield Shire Council back in the nineties when the state government took electricity off the two remaining local government bodies that provided electricity to the community, their communities. One was Tenerfield and one was, was Broken Hill. And we were required to have a, a price path, which was then rubber-stamped by IPART to say that it was fair and reasonable and that it was based on us meeting costs and us being able to deliver what it was the community was, 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 was expecting from us. I'm not saying that we're, we should go to that path, but I think that's kind of what you're inviting in, in, in your question is that if we can show that to the community through that and get the feedback from the community through, through, through the exhibition and through the consultation, then there's a rubber stamp, which is really what you're doing through the SRV, although the decision is made irrespective of the views that are expressed through that process.
I'd like to add as well that just in recognition of that constant tension between community expectations and what council can resource, a tailored approach that allows councils to hear from their community about what's important to them in terms of services or infrastructure, renewals or maintenance will be important. And that flexibility that you describe and that Mr Arnold is describing will be key so that we can tailor our efforts to what's important in our community, which will be different right around the state. So absolutely would support looking at a mechanism that enables that in a responsible way, that also takes into, you know, consideration the impact on rate payers. Our rate revenue at council is only 18% of our revenue. So again, this is, it's important to recognise that we talk a lot about rates and we recognise that the community is paying and contributing to the services that council delivers, but it's not all of it. So.
That's a really, really good point. Just, you talked about, you know, being responsible. How do we ensure councils will, will set a rate that the community can afford to pay?
I think it goes back to Mr Arnold's statement of having that relationship with community and having that trust. Accountability at a local council level could be achieved in different ways. I know there's been a significant investment in the Office of Local Government, for example. So my view is that they could play, I guess, a more prominent role in that space. And going back to the descriptors or the benchmarks we described earlier in this conversation, having a consistent performance measurement framework for New South Wales councils would also improve in that accountability piece. So I, I'd see that there's potentially a role for the Office of Local Government as a way of ensuring that accountability and responsibility.
Thank you. Just looking at my colleagues to see if they had any further questions. No. I might, I could just continue on with one final one about grants. And many of the submissions we've received and evidence we've heard about, talked about, you know, the impact of tied grants and them being, you know, sugar hits and then obviously then funding an asset that's needed to be depreciated and, and all of so on and so forth. Is this the case for Byron? And is there a better way that we can fund the construction and ongoing maintenance of these assets that doesn't leave councils worse off?
I don't have the answer, but thank you for the question. I'd like to think there could be a better way. I think the, the availability of grants to build new works rather than maintain them, you know, is what we've seen being available to councils before is the, in the construction phase, an asset is then handed back to council to maintain. So that is that double-edged sword that you're describing. So I don't have a, a solution or an answer as to how that could be achieved, but the expansion of the grants to take into account some of the maintenance over the lifetime of the asset would be welcome, I imagine.
I think we've seen particularly in Byronshire where we have recent times applied for grants or gotten grants for not the traditional infrastructure building. We've seen, you know, the, the pothole money that was, that was provided, which provided a boost to us being able to get on the ground. We were also fortunate to receive a grant of $20 million, which enabled, has enabled us to do a lot of renewal work. And almost a third of that money went into bitumen resales and asphalt overlays, which was about not the, the glossy ribbon-cutting type of project, but it's about bringing the infrastructure that is long worn out up to a standard that the community expected. I can recall going to a meeting probably about six years ago of the Byron Bay Town Centre Master Plan Group, which is, guides us on the works we do there. And the request to myself as a general manager and to the Director of Infrastructure Services was either improve the lighting so we can see the potholes at night or fill the potholes. And I guess that's kind of what we, we've actually done, done, done both. And, and I guess that's what we, we probably need to be thinking about is, is the assets we've got, being able to maintain them into the future, because they were probably built in some cases very cheaply in the fifties and sixties, but they're, they're, they're worn out now. And it's about what does the new, what does the new way of looking at the world, is it all about cutting ribbons or is it about making the community work in the way the community expects it to work?
Just a final thought, sorry, just to say, it seems to me that it's probably a case-by-case basis, depending on which area you're talking about and which grant and for what purpose. When it comes, for example, to the rail trail, that would be a great thing, obviously, to see the, the rail trail fully funded in the Northern Rivers. But we have been adamant in the sense of Byronshire that we will not be signing up to it ultimately if it means that we're left with the, with the longest section, I think, of 48 kilometres of, of maintaining that year on year. But on a case-by-case basis, I think a tourism levy would cover that quite nicely. Just to chuck that one in there as well.
Yeah. Look, it's an interesting thought. And just in the minute, minute or two that we have remaining, you did mention in your submission about revenue diversification opportunities beyond those traditional sources. Apart from obviously the levy that you've mentioned and the bed tax, were there any other potential legislative amendments that you think we should consider?
Oh, like I mentioned before, so the stormwater management levy, I mean, that's critical, you know, and just literally tying that into the cost of providing that urban maintenance, you know, it's, it's in terms of user pays or, or working something out anyway. Like, so I think that's an easy one. DA fees, it's pretty clear. Again, and look, everyone thinks they're special. You know, we, we're no different in Byronshire, but we do have some pretty unique challenges with the, the tourism, with the homelessness, with the amount of development interest in our Shire. And, and so because we have a lot of development interest, that gap between what development costs us to process and what we can charge in fees is more significant. And so being able to close the loop on, on those costs and, and in the user pays, you know, and having a way to do that, even if it requires an analysis on a case-by-case basis, I think that's important.
Thank you. Thanks so much. That concludes this time slot. Any questions that you have taken on notice or any supplementary questions, the secretary will be in touch. You'll have 21 days to answer those. Thank you so much for making time to come and give evidence to our inquiry today. We'll now take a short break. Thanks.
Thank you so much for making time to come and give evidence to our inquiry today. We'll now take a short break. Thanks.
Welcome to our next witnesses. If I could ask you to state your name, position, title and swear either the oath or affirmation, starting on my left.
Michael Cholton, manager of financial services to each Shire council. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Troy Green, general manager, Tweed Shire Council. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. And would either of you like to start by making an opening statement?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before the Standing Committee on State Development and this Inquiry. The funding challenges for local government mainly exist for the general operations of local government. Waste management operations and water and wastewater operations are generally adequately catered for under specific frameworks and legislation that encourages the full costs, full funding of costs. This is not necessarily the case for capital expenditure such as building new water supply and wastewater treatment plants that rely on cap developer contributions to partly or fully fund. The general activities of local government face many issues of income limitations and cost shifting to fund vast array of competing services, facilities and infrastructure. The council submission therefore focuses on these general activities only when addressing the terms of reference. In New South Wales, the Integrated Planning and Reporting Framework provides a vehicle for councils to determine the required mix and levels of service and infrastructure that the community requires and is willing to pay for. Council income sources however are constrained by rate pegging or require a special rate variation process. Many fees do not fully achieve full cost recovery due to desired community service obligations or statutory limitations. Accordingly, expenditures are more determined by available income rather than community needs. The experience for council however over many years has been that infrastructure and to a lesser extent services have had to be reduced due to rate pegs or non-indexation of fees and charges. The increase provided by the maximum variation allowed in the rate peg would generally only cover increases in employee costs and other nondiscretionary costs, leaving no scope to increased budgets for materials and services. I part recently conducted review of the rate peg calculation methodology and some improvements have been made. The new rate methodology is a step in the right direction but needs some time to mature before any rational analysis can be made. I would make this comment though, that removing the rate peg entirely could politicise provision of services to a greater extent. The rate peg provides an arm's length determination by an independent body of the rate increase to be applied. Council has undertaken various special rate variations in recent years and considers the process as too focused on specific projects and at times not fit for the purposes of the special rate variation request. The main source of general income for council after rates is grants. By way of example, this financial year, council received 265 grants from 47 agencies totaling $195.6 million, most of which were related to flood recovery and infrastructure. Without these grants, council would not have had the capacity to fully recover from the 2022 floods. To this end, we are very grateful to both the state and the Commonwealth. Council tries to take advantage of specific purpose grants where possible, however, they mostly become available with short notice in a reactive grant program rounds for which councils are expected to be shovel-ready to get applications approved. This can have an adverse impact on council's priorities and ability to resource the projects and result in funds not being optimised. Council considers these grants could be much better applied if made available through more flexible and long-term recurring forms of funding programs such as the Roads to Recovery Programme and the Stronger Country Communities Fund. As mentioned previously, any limitation to applying full cost recovery for fees results in rates being diverted to subsidise these mandatory services. It is considered that all fees, limited by statute, should be reviewed and indexed annually to ensure they maintain a reasonable level of cost recovery, particularly in the development assessment function. Developer contributions are an important source of income for local government to fund infrastructure for new development. Like fees and charges, they are regulated or capped in New South Wales. In fact, developer contributions have been capped since August 2012 at $20,000 per each brownfield dwelling and $30,000 for greenfield dwelling, without regard to council's costs in providing related services and infrastructure. Construction and land costs have increased significantly since August 2012. The average lot in Tweed 10 years ago sold for approximately $300,000 with developer contributions at $30,000, representing 10% of the land value. Today, lots are in excess of $750,000 and contributions are still at $30,000 or now 4% of the land value. An emerging concern for a council's ability to fund infrastructure and services is that as New South Wales is gripped with a housing crisis and a deficit of low-cost dwellings, local government areas are experiencing an increase of properties with granny flats. This is a welcome trend and has the ability to fill a much-needed housing topology gap whilst retaining the amenity of neighbourhoods. Likewise, some local government areas are facing pressure to permit dual occupancies on rural land. That is a second primary dwelling. Due to the New South Wales rating system being based on unimproved land value, there is no mechanism for councils to seek a contribution towards the cost of services and facilities under this arrangement. Currently, the existing ratepayers are therefore subsidising those with second dwellings on their properties and that does not accord with the user pay system. By way of example, if Tweed were to permit dual occupancy on rural allotments, it could see up to 4,000 additional primary detached dwellings with no capacity to rate these homes. At an average rate of $1,694, this would result in lost recurrent revenue of $6.776 million annually, money much needed to provide the libraries, parks, sporting fields, pools, roads etcetera that the residents occupying these homes would expect and demand. We suggest therefore that the government look to amend the Local Government Act to allow for a rate multiplying factor of 1.5 for granny flats and two for dual occupancy and that the permissible income be increased annually based upon DA approvals. This proposal is in addition to the population factor included in the current rate peg model. In closing, I'd also like to submit to the inquiry the Tweed Shire Council's recent submission to the New South Wales Productivity Commission on the Alternative Funding Models for Local Water Utilities, issues paper February 2024, and the submission to the Federal Government on Local Government Sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you. If you wanted, the secretariat will be happy to take those documents from you if you wanted to pass them. If you're tabling them as evidence for this.
I've provided them.
Beautiful, thanks. We might move to questions now. We'll start with Dr Amanda Con. Thank you.
Thanks so much for coming to give evidence today. My first question is arising from what you've outlined in the written submission and in your opening statement about developer contributions and some of those maths really demonstrate how that hasn't kept up with changes in the last decade or so. What mechanisms do you think we should be considering to allow councils to adequately levy new development?
In answering that, it's twofold. One, I think the contribution cap that was put in place at the time was probably appropriate, but if you look at the construction cost index, you know, and it relates to the provision of infrastructure that's happened over that time, there's been no increase. So in real terms, we've got less than half what we used to have to fund that essential infrastructure. The perverse outcome for that can be that councils look at it and decide it's just simply not worth investing in that infrastructure for the new development because it doesn't pay. By way of example, council borrowed $130 million more than 13 years ago to build two new wastewater treatment plants and to upgrade our water treatment plant in forward anticipation of two greenfield development sites of around 5,000 lots each. Under the current methodology, we're only allowed to recoup the actual cost of the construction. We're not allowed to recoup interest on those charges. So in real terms, given that neither of those developments have come forward for development, our existing ratepayers are picking up the costs through their water usage charges of the interest that we're required to pay for that investment. So you've got a perverse outcome of existing residents funding new infrastructure. And for a place like Tweed, we've got 13% of our residents currently are pensioners. So we've got pensioners at the moment subsidising some of the country's richest people who own greenfield developments and we've got no mechanism under the Planning Act to require them to bring those blocks to the market and there's no ability to index the fee that they're required to pay for the infrastructure. So one, I think that the infrastructure needs to be indexed annually in accordance with CPI or some construction price index. Two, I think the planning system needs to be reviewed so that when development consent is granted, that developers are given a timeframe to bring the development to the market. And if they don't bring it to the market within that time, so it could be 10 years by the time they get a construction certificate to bring it to the market, if they don't bring it to market within that time, we need to look at other mechanisms and levers to encourage that land to be brought to market such as raiding the land as if it was developed, land taxing the land as if it was developed, and failing that removing the zoning that allowed for the residential development zone. By doing so, governments will ensure that land is rezoned, is then used for the purpose it was rezoned for, which will hopefully help avert the housing crisis that we're in at the moment too.
Similar to that, the indexing is obviously a relevant one, but you know, the motivation behind around the capping is obviously the housing affordability, but as Troy's just pointed out, the ratepayers are sitting there paying all the interest as time goes by and the developer just doesn't act on it. So it sort of hasn't worked as intended, I don't think.
Thank you. That answer was very comprehensive. My second question relates to your position as a cross-border council and as you probably know, I used to be at Allbury City Council and I'm aware that there have been occasions for us at Allbury where the state government's contribution towards relevant infrastructure was discounted, for example, because residents of Victoria might use freeway exits and entries and that was a real financial challenge down at Allbury. Do you have similar challenges because of your status as a cross-border community?
Yeah, we certainly do. We experience exactly the same issues that you experienced at Allbury. So part of that comes down to the model that's provided by the state. So for those on-ramps and exits for the freeway, for example, they look at areas that have a population of at least 100,000. Tweed currently sits at about 98,000, which means we have to fund the on-ramps and off-ramps despite the fact that we've got a population of $650,000, sorry, 650,000 people adjoining our main street, you know, from Coolangatta North. So the state government just does not recognise that there's any residents in Coolangatta or South East Queensland that utilise any of the infrastructure that's built on those freeways. So that's wrong and I think the way to fix that is just to have a simple radius. It should be within, you know, a population of 100,000 within a 25 kilometre radius of the local government area and that would resolve it.
Yeah, probably more particularly, that goes back to your previous question where we've got cap developer contributions which go into our Tweed Roads Contribution Plan and we have to use more of our own funding to fund those on-ramps that Troy's talking about.
Thank you. I also wanted to ask about environmental initiatives and particularly biodiversity. I understand that you're very lucky as a local government area to have really high biodiversity value and some good initiatives of council to do things like weed control. Are you adequately supported to do that work or are you adequately able to raise the revenue you need to do that work?
At the moment, no. It's solely through rate revenue and that is a problem, particularly in biodiverse areas such as the Tweed and, you know, I think the fire ant infestation in Tweed is a good example of when we rely solely on state governments or federal government to assist in some of those areas, we can all end up paying for it. Thankfully, you know, both the state and the Commonwealth have stepped up strongly within the response to fire ants, but I think on a recurrent basis, our ability to fund weeds in particular, both on private property, on crown land and in council land, is not adequately met. You know, we do the best we can with the resources that we've got, but there's certainly not enough money there to eliminate the weeds. You know, and a perfect example is, you know, camflorals used to be classified as a weed. The government's given up and said, we can't keep on top of it. So they've declassified it as a weed, where the reality of it is, it is a weed.
Specifically across the Shire, I'd say no. I'd support Troy's comments. We've had two special rate variations probably in the last six years to do with the two developments ironically enough that Troy was talking about earlier, that the residual land left over after development was environmentally sensitive and the way the developer approached that originally through Part Five termination but later through agreement was to do a special rate variation on that subdivision. So when we, and we touched on it a bit in our submission as well, about fit for purpose of the SRV process. In those particular cases, there was only one landowner in both of those SRV applications and you had to go through the rigmarole, but there's a special rate attached to those subdivisions that will fund the ongoing maintenance of those lands.
Thanks. Did you want to go next?
Thank you. Just wanting to pick up on those cross-border issues as well. And in terms of, as you used the example of the on-ramps and the like, I imagine the situation in Queensland's quite different. And being a border council and being able to look across the border, and I know that Gold Coast Council that you referenced is the second largest council in Australia, so maybe not comparing like for like, but from your understanding of the Queensland system, do you think they pick up on similar issues? Or do you think there are things that they're doing better up there that we could potentially use and utilise in New South Wales?
I think Queensland do a lot of things better and some things I think we do better. Queensland and local government system-
And of course it'd be remiss of us to say Queensland do anything better on a State of Origin day like today.
Well, that's right. I've got my blues tie on today, so I'm hoping we do have a win this afternoon, tonight. Local government in Queensland is structured very differently. So for example, Queensland councils have the ability to put a levy on to do weed management if they wanted to or for environmental. We don't have the ability to do that. We can only put a levy on for stormwater. So they have the capacity to create levies that we don't. They're also not rate-pegged. They're generally much larger local government areas, so they've got that with greater populations. So they have that, I guess, that scale of size, you know, to their benefit. They also, the way that they deal with developer contributions sometimes is a little different as well, where they build in the fact that not only should the developer fund the infrastructure upfront, but there should be some type of sinking fund for recurrent maintenance. So for example, if a developer requires a huge roundabout, that's going to cost, you know, four or five million dollars to build and it has a 10-year lifespan, they might build in upfront some money to maintain that in 10 years' time. So they take a longer strategic view of the way that they fund and provide the infrastructure and the way that they remunerate the councillors is much more fitting than the way that we do in New South Wales. So they're able to attract people from, I guess, a more diverse background and different age groups that can survive as councillor on a living wage where our councillors in New South Wales don't have the capacity- New South Wales don't have the capacity to do that. There's pros and cons on both systems, but, you know, it is interesting. It's very different. One of the areas that we experienced the biggest frustration is in development applications, though, because many of our developers are Queensland-based, and they're used to working under the Queensland planning system. Then they come to New South Wales with a highly complicated and regulated act that's been amended multiple times since 1992, and they get frustrated. They get angry with council, they can't understand the processes, the layers of bureaucracy that sit over the top of it, and all the checks and balances. So that's one area, I think, that we could really look to improve in New South Wales, is to try to simplify the New South Wales planning system, and by doing so, have a look to places like Queensland on how they manage their developer contributions to ensure that land's owned and is developed, as well as forward-funded into the future.
Thank you. And to that point, you talked about the land banking, so to speak, for want of a better word, that you're seeing from developers. Is part of that exacerbated because of that frustration in terms of the New South Wales and Queensland planning systems, or are there other factors why they're land banking and property prices being one, and looking for that sort of great win-win gain, so to speak?
Prosper Australia did a really good report on this in August 2022, and it highlights, it takes a nationwide view of land banking. In Tweed, we've got approximately 13,000 lots zoned for development ready today. Some of those have been zoned for the last 20, 30 years. 10,000 of those are owned by one developer. So he also owns most of the greenfield development in South East Queensland. There's no competition, and they can trickle-feed and drip-feed that land onto the market at a price premium. I believe developers need to make money, or we won't, you know, they won't be in there. But you need to ask yourself, when you look at some of the top richest people in the country, and you see a lot of them are developers, that there has to be some capacity and enticement and responsibility for them to actually bring the land to the market, because that's why government rezones it. They don't rezone it to make anyone millionaires, billionaires or trillionaires. They rezone it because there's a need. I get frustrated when I see that amount of blocks sitting in Tweed zoned for development, and we've got no mechanism available to us to bring that land to the market. I think that needs to be reviewed in New South Wales. I think it needs to be reviewed nationwide. And I think it's not that hard. You could review the planning system so that you didn't rezone land upfront, you could have a deferred zoning. So you could say to proponents, look, we're open to rezone this land a residential, but we would like to see you go ahead, do your concept plans, put your DA in, get a construction certificate, and when your construction certificate's done, we'll rezone the land, and we'll give you 10 years to bring the first block to market. That puts the onus and responsibility back to them, and it allows councils then to fund infrastructure with certainty. The problem that we've got at the moment, is the example I demonstrated, where we, in good faith, went and borrowed $130 million to upgrade needed infrastructure for those developments, but the developments didn't occur. But we're still carrying interest for 12 years on those loan borrowings, and we're yet to recoup money through the developer contributions. It's perverse. And, you know, that Prosper Australia report signifies that up to 60,000 lots in New South Wales don't have the required infrastructure for land release. And part of that is, as a council, if I've got another proponent come to me and say, look, if we rezone this land, you know, could you build the water, you know, upgrade the wastewater treatment plant to fund it? If we went and did that every time and it never actually got developed, what's the outcome? Look, we're in the situation at Tweed, we're already replacing the water filtration plant filters, and yet they-
They're not being used.
They're not being used. You know, so I get tired of hearing that it's because, you know, councils are too slow at assessing DA's, or it's the DA backlog. Look, yes, DA assessments have blown out in recent years post-COVID, but that's not the cause of land not being brought to the market, and it's not the cause for development. We're often doing DA's on the same parcel land multiple times. So I've got an example of a parcel land in Kingscliff that my staff have done four lots of DA's on, because every time there's a new DA, the land value of it goes up, they then sell it, and then a new proponent buys it and wants to do a different concept. That's not efficient use of government resources, and it's not about, that doesn't bring land to market. And it doesn't provide councils or other infrastructure providers, such as your essential energies and, you know, Sydney Water or Hunter Water, the surety that's needed to invest in that infrastructure. And it's further complicated by the WICAR Act. So the Water Industry Competition Act that was introduced by New South Wales says that a developer doesn't need to use the council's water or wastewater systems. So we had the perverse outcome where that proponent toyed five years ago with not using council's infrastructure, he was going to build his own. So in that case, we would have borrowed all that money, built the infrastructure, and it was never used. Now, ultimately, they didn't do that, but it sent a strong message to me, is better not invest too far ahead because it might not be used. So, you know, what was done as an ability for the government trying to assist proponents release land so they could use their own infrastructure has the perverse outcome of saying to water utility and wastewater utility providers, don't forward-fund and forward-plan too far in advance because you might get, you might be holding an asset that's never utilised.
And Mr Green, to that point, does Queensland have the same problems when it comes to land banking? Or is there something in their system which is a little bit different to New South Wales?
Oh, look, I think, I think what was pretty clear in that report that I read, and there was another one by Deloitte, which was done by the Department of Planning, I think in 2023, is that the land banking issue is pretty common across the country. The one jurisdiction that is a little different is Western Australia. So Western Australia have that deferred zoning approach. And I think, you know, if I was to say, where should New South Wales look, they should look to Western Australia.
Thank you. And just one last question from me. In terms of one of your border residents, literally, you've got a couple of streets where there's two sides of the street, which are, one's in Queensland, one's in New South Wales. What's the comparison between the rates between Tweedshire Council and Gold Coast Council in those sort of examples?
I've actually never done a street-by-street comparison. The way Gold Coast rate, though, is very different to the way we rate. So if you're an investor and you hold a property in Gold Coast for rent, you'll pay a multiplying factor for it. So just as I've suggested, a multiplying factor, if someone's got a granny flat or a secondary dwelling, they have a multiplying factor on their rate if you're using that property for investment. Brisbane have a multiplying factor if it's used for Airbnb. Gold Coast also rate differentially on high-rise development, so they still use unimproved land value, but they provide different tiers of rate depending on where you sit in that building. So the first three stories, for example, is the cheapest, then stories three to 11 is the next cheapest, then above 11 stories, you're paying a premium because of the views. So they have a little bit extra flexibility that we don't have. And I guess what we're saying to you here today is that we don't think the rate peg, you know, like I hear a lot of councils say, remove the rate peg, that'll fix it all. I don't think that's the answer. I think the rate peg provides some surety and certainty, but there needs to be, you know, a bigger strategic view of the way housing topologies and everything are changing. You know, we are going to more unit-type development, and if you, you know, if you're on the top floor in a penthouse and under the New South Wales rating system, you'll still only pay a portion of that unimproved land value. Whereas if you're on the Gold Coast, you'd pay a premium because you're on the penthouse. And they have that multiplying factor. So I think, seriously, that should be looked at.
Thank you very much.
The, sorry, the only thing I'd add, if to derisk local government, if the state government actually forward-funded the infrastructure that's required, I don't know what the New South Wales Treasurer would think about that, but I know his capacity to do it's greater than ours. What would then be interesting is then we, once we get the developer contributions, we pass it on to the state government, would they then be indexing the developer contributions or remaining, or have them remaining capped? So that would be an interesting discussion.
Thank you.
Thanks. I wanted to turn now to just a couple of questions about the recent SRV for Tweed, which was in 2023, I believe, so only 2.35% above the peg. In the context of other councils that are going for sort of 20, 30% SRVs, that seems somewhat surprising to me. Why did you choose to pursue an SRV in these circumstances?
If I can go back in history a bit, when Tweed council was under administration, one of our administrators was the Director General of the Department of Local Government, Gary Payne, and he introduced Section 508A of the Act, which gave you the multi-year special rate variation application process. We took advantage of that, so I'm going to guess from about 2006 for the next seven years, we had quite an increase in our rates. So our starting point compared to other councils may be higher compared to what perhaps you're looking at. The one, as I mentioned before, we had two special rate variations for those environmentally protected lands on those specific developments. The ones last year were just, got to a point, I think, in terms of some of our costs and cybersecurity and insurance and everything, that was just beyond our means to, you know, fund that without sort of really cutting back on our services. So that was the decision that council took at the time. We've still got some work to do in terms of asset management plans in particular, and whether we fund assets well enough into the future. They're one of those ones that, you know, your depreciation is theoretical, you get asset revaluations all the time, which go up, you know, due to inflation. So, you know, in terms of your asset renewal ratios and things like that, you're always chasing them. Unfortunately, in that asset space, it's one of those ones, if you don't make the right investment at the right time, it's going to cost you more further down the track, and you're not going to see the evidence of it for 10 or 20 years.
Just further to that, part of the special rate variation we made was because the state government had removed the ability for us to levy an environmental enforcement levy on DA fees. So that environmental enforcement levy used to fund our three town planning compliance officers. When that was removed, it was removed and the state said because there was no nexus to the development applications. But interestingly enough, the state then applied a similar levy on the DA's to fund the building commissioners' work. So it was removed from councils, and it was put on as a state levy to fund the building commissioners' work. So we were left with the option of, do we put a special rate variation in and retain the environmental enforcement levies? Or do I simply say to the community, we're no longer going to enforce, you know, compliance and put those three staff off? So that was a large part of that levy.
So just with that in mind, did you get the benefit out of that levy that you, so out of that increase that you had hoped to? And how did the community react to, I suppose, what was a relatively gentle ask compared to some other councils?
Our special rate variation happened to coincide with land valuations coming to the market. So especially through COVID, as you appreciate, our coastal strip in some areas increased 128%. The average across the Shire was about 72, and the areas west of the Shire are actually less than that. So I think in hindsight, the feedback that we received was probably more related to the change in land valuations and trying to debate the equity of the system as opposed to the 2.35% increase itself. I think, you know, and because one of those bigger ones in there, too, was also cybersecurity and, you know, all the fishing and scams that are going on at the moment, you know, I don't think, I thought they, thought it was probably a fair enough adjustment.
The interesting thing with the land valuations that Michael's raised is that coastal councils in particular are unique in the state. And the best way that I can describe the impact of change in land values is that you can find properties along the coastal strip could be paying five, six, seven, eight times the rate of someone at a, say, situated at Mawoolan Bar. So we could have a beachfront property in Kingscliff paying eight times what somebody in Mawoolan Bar pays. And you could argue, well, that's, it's a wealth tax, and it is. But by way of example, it would be like amalgamating North Sydney council with Blacktown council. What would happen is that everyone in North Sydney's rates would go up, and everyone in Blacktown's rates would go down if they were one local government area. So the way to resolve that is to try to have, just as there's a minimum rate, I think the state needs to have a look at introducing a maximum rate so that no person pays, say, more than four times the minimum rate or five times the minimum rate for residential land.
Thank you. Your council's growing quite fast for a regional council. How does that affect your ability to fund services?
Well, the IPART methodology provides a growth factor, which is much appreciated for a council like ours. But I think the biggest problem with the growth is, again, forward-funding the infrastructure without knowing when we're going to recoup the money that we have invested. So that's, it comes down to that timing and unsurety of when developments will come forward. If we had surety of when land was going to be released, developer contributions are going to be recapped, and rates were going to start to be received, we would be able to strategically plan much better than we can.
Yeah, I think there was some acknowledgement, it was sort of taken for granted, the extra rate revenue you got from the development-funded, you know, the extra call on services and infrastructure for that matter, but I think that's proven not to be the case. And I think that's also why IPART acknowledged that they also had to put a population factor into the rate peg specific to each council.
Thank you. In your submission, you talk about the local water utilities funding and the separate issues paper that you provided, which, thank you, I'm very grateful for. Without having had the time to properly sort of interrogate that, I just wondered if you might comment whether there were any specific issues within that that you wanted to raise here that would be relevant to our inquiry?
Yeah, it was just, the main thing I wanted to raise was the impact of the Water Industry Competition Act and the impact that that has as a disincentive for authorities to invest in water. And again, the impact that we have in forward-funding that infrastructure and not being able to recoup the money until the development comes online. So I think I've pretty much covered the main points for that. It's just, at the moment, I don't think the state's necessarily cognisant, you know, like we talk about the cost of living crisis. Part of the recurrent cost of living crisis is a fact that we're passing on these charges each year to existing residents, and they're not, they don't really have visibility that they're actually funding and underwriting and supporting new development. But that's the reality. For the existing residents, they would be better if there was no new development financially.
Did you have anything, sorry? In your submission, you also talk about an audit of the actual average cost of assessing and determining a development assessment, sorry, should be undertaken. In terms of that, what would such an audit look at? And what do you, what is it, in your view, that it would find? What could we possibly do to address that?
You may recall that the state government tried to assist councils with a regional flying squad of town planners, and they had a planning delivery unit as well, both of which have been disbanded. We referred some development applications to those units, and the fees that we got for the DA's did not match what it actually cost the state to assess those DA's. And I think the state could go and have a look at that for a start. What did it actually cost to assess those DA's? We've been saying that for a long time. So the DA fees, because they've been, you know, they weren't indexed for 21 years, they're now indexed, but we had 21 years where they weren't indexed. In that 21- In that 21 years, we had year-on-year salary increases. The cost of construction had gone up, but yet what we were provided to assess a DA remained unchanged. And then there's some of those other statutory changes, such as someone puts a DA modification in, it's a few hundred dollars. Well, we can't assess a DA for a few hundred dollars. So in Tweed's case, I think we're the rate payer at the rate base at the moment, subsidizes town planning in the order of about $3.6 million annually. Our suggestion there is, is that IPART should be asked to, say, select five city-based councils, five regional councils and five rural councils. Have a look at what it costs them on average to assess a DA and then set a fee based on that average assessment. And I think, you know, by splitting it up between city, regional and rural, they'll get some visibility whether there's different costs that are involved and then allow us to charge the real cost of DA assessment. Part of the reason there's a shortfall of DA planners in the state government system and the local government system at the moment is because of those 22 years of non-indexation. So year-on-year, as I had positions become vacant, knowing that I was not going to get an increase in the fees, I would, I might have had a job grade nine town planner, a senior town planner. And I'd say, well, I'm not going to be able to fund that next year. I'll, you know, I'll downgrade it with job grade eight. And that went on. So, you know, councils had lower and lower skilled people or we just absorbed more DAs and we ended up with DA backlogs because we couldn't afford to put a new DA town planner on. If we were allowed to charge the real cost of assessment, we would then have the money to fund the DA town planners that we need to do the assessments in a timely manner. And I think if you spoke to most proponents, they would probably prefer to pay an extra 50% on their DA fee, knowing they would get their DA out quicker than the holding costs they've got while the DAs are in the system. So it's a false economy to keep the DA fees low without factoring in the holding cost to the proponents.
The only thing similar to Troy, I think the other maybe factor that's missing there is the complexity of the planning law has changed so much over the last, you know, 10 or 20 years that the actual assessment time of each DA has been extended as well. So, you know, that's added to the average cost of the DAs. But again, I suppose it's back like to the capping of the developer contributions. It's a position of government to, you know, to try and promote housing affordability and the like, but it's actually costing the general rate payer.
Do either of my colleagues have any final questions? Just wondering, in the time we have left, have you done any rough calculations as to what you think the shortfall is in terms of that DA, the real cost of development applications and assessments?
Well, we could divide what we think the shortfall is. And we're trying to leave out legal fees because quite often that's a, you know, determination of the council. We know how much we subsidize it. So if we divided it by the number of DAs, it'd give you a fair indication.
It'd be about $3,600 a DA.
Thanks.
So based on our shortfall in the number of DAs we get, it'd work out about $3,600 per DA. So that's what we think the fee would need to increase. And when you think if someone's putting a DA in for a million dollar development, it's not a lot of extra money to be able to fund and get those, you know, the assessment out quickly.
Thanks, Mr. Green. That was some quick maths. That's all we have time for today. Any supplementary questions or questions on notice? The secretary will be in touch with you about, and you'll have 21 days to respond. But thank you so much for taking time to give evidence to the inquiry today.
No worries. Thank you. Thanks for hearing us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now welcome our next witnesses. Thank you for making time to give evidence to this inquiry. I believe you're appearing via Webex today. If each of you could start by stating your name and position title and swearing either an oath or an affirmation, we might start with the two that are in the room together, if that's all right. Apologies, we're just having some issues with audio at our end. Any of the others online able to hear and able to start off?
Yes, we can at Clarence Valley Council. I'm Laura Black, General Manager, Clarence Valley Council. My intention is to do the affirmation.
Thanks, Laura. Please proceed.
I solemnly and sincerely and I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Councillor Peter Johnston, are you online?
Yes, I am. So my name is Peter Johnston. I'm going to do the oath. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. And just your title for hand side, please.
I'm the Mayor. I'm the Mayor of Clarence Valley Council.
Thank you. We'll now see if Tenterfield can hear us and introduce themselves. Okay. So we're just, sorry, apologies, we're just trying to ascertain the issue as to Tenterfield Council. We can see them, but we can't hear them. We might start off Clarence Valley Council with yourselves, if either of you would like to start by making a short opening statement?
Yes, please. We are privileged to represent the Clarence Valley, a very beautiful part of New South Wales. There are three coronations within our LGA that represent over 6% of our population, the Gambangia, Anjulam and Yegel people, each with a rich history and culture that goes back countless generations. With beaches, mountains, national parks and a mighty river that gives our LGA its name, the Clarence Valley is the size of Lebanon with a hundredth of the population. Or to put this another way, we're larger than the other six LGAs in Northern Rivers Joint Organisation, that is Tweed, Byron Bay, Ballina, Richmond Valley, Lismore and Coyegal, all put together. We have the challenge of maintaining a huge area with a relatively small rate base, which is widely distributed. The distance between our population centers makes provision of services such as water, sewage and waste collection much more expensive. Responsible to 2,500 kilometres of road, the 13th highest in the state. Our population is aging with a high proportion of retired people. The average taxable income in the Clarence Valley is 118th out of 128 LDAs in New South Wales. Housing affordability is a struggle for many, with house prices being driven up in the seaside areas by people from outside the local area who buy our houses to use as holiday homes, short-term holiday rentals as well as retirement homes. Our levels of social disadvantage are high and this limits the rates that our people can comfortably afford to pay. The bushfires of 2019 burned 60% of our local government area. And whilst we're fortunate in 2022 not to have been flooded as badly as our neighbours to the north, the Clarence has a potential to suffer worse floods. We're ensuring that we build back better and that new infrastructure is built with resilience in mind. But this makes projects more expensive. I thank the members for your interest in investigating the challenges we face in adequately delivering the services and facilities our communities deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Johnston. I think we now have Tenterfield online.
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, we can. Thank you so much. Am I able to ask both of you to just start by stating your name, position, title and swearing either the oath or the affirmation?
Excellent.
Yes, certainly. So I'm Bronwyn Petrie. I'm the Mayor of Tenerfield Shire Council. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
I'm Basson, the General Manager of Tenerfield Shire Council. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, but the truth.
Thank you. And would either of you like to also make a short opening statement?
Our General Manager, Heinz, has just been with us only two and a half months. So he's been having a bit of a baptism of fire, well, fire, flood, drought, you name it, Tenerfield's had it. So we are a shire of seven and a half thousand square kilometres. We own an infrastructure shire with 1,689 kilometres of road, 152 bridges, many of which are still timber, you know, 400 kilometres, et cetera, et cetera. We have a small rate base of some 5,016 rates notices go out. So some of them are held by, you know, several are held with one person. So there's not quite that many rate payers. We have a population of around 7,000, just under 7,000 people across that shire. We also are a border shire with a bit of a strange shape. We are 62% timbered and we do have two thirds of our, our eastern, two thirds of the shire, what we call eastern fall and they fall into the, it falls into the Clarence catchment. So it's highly mountainous and from the top to the west, that's the tablelands. And that goes down at the Moira Darling via the McIntyre. So we are a very scenic shire, very lovely landscapes, but we have some tricky terrain, similar to parts of Clarence, obviously. And we are also subject to storm and weather events from both the west and the east because of our location. And we have had four significant storm and flood events since March 21. So it's March 21, November 21, February, March 22 and then May 22. And we also had significant fires earlier on in 2019. And then the Black Summer Bushfire started here in Tenerfield Shire on the 6th of September 2019 and actually did not finish until the 13th of February 2020 with a five-week period of not burning through November and the last week of October. So we also be proud of that record drought and being a border town, significant implications to our community and even our shire operations as a result of the Queensland border closure. So yes, been a bit of a tough gig for the last eight years, but very pleased to have been invited to give evidence to your very worthy inquiry. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. I might, we'll turn now to questions from my colleagues in the room, just looking around. If either of you wanted to start, I'm happy to start off. So my first question is to Clarence Valley, if you're able to. And feel free Tenterfield as well, if you've got comments on this more general question also. How have disaster recovery funds been managed in the past? And how has that impacted your financial sustainability, if at all?
Yeah, I can respond to this one. We've actually had since the bushfires in 2021, I think it's eight, natural disasters declared. We, in about 2020, we opted in to the state government funding option. And since then have had a significant change in the access to funds for natural disasters. However, I would say prior to that, council ended up foregoing much of the work that could have been done, a number of years there, just in the absence of having any funds ourselves. We were a 2016 declared unfit for the future council. So at the time, we simply had no surplus to spend on natural disasters. And the council of the day didn't appear to chase funds for those things. So we've had significant success in recent years. But prior to that, you know, with eight natural disasters since 2021, that's, that's not unusual for us. So the same conditions would have applied the years prior to 2020 and becoming an opting council.
Thank you. Yeah, please continue.
Is that okay?
Yes, absolutely. Sorry. Yep.
So we, similar to Clarence, and we actually stand across the other side of the river from Clarence, so on our eastern side. Going through those different types of natural disasters, we also have a, basically a skeleton staff component at the moment. We did have, we've been doing a natural attrition over recent years due to financial sustainability issues we have been facing. And a major part of that is obviously depreciation and, but that feeds into the asset renewal and maintenance. But as a result of the repeat natural disasters and the lag time in getting approvals, sorry, assessments and approvals, and in fact, the reimbursement of funds we have already expended. So just for, in our current day at the moment, as of probably six weeks ago, we had had just, just like minimally over 10% of the disaster applications we had lodged from March 21 approved and assessed and approved. So we're talking over three years. In addition to that, we've still, we are still waiting, awaiting outstanding funds reimbursements of over $6 million. That's equivalent to the rates we get per year. We can't, our cash flow simply cannot carry that. And it got to the point where Heinz, our General Manager, said to me, you know, probably it's been two months now. He said, Madam Mayor, I've had to stop an invoice payment for a bridge that needs to be replaced as, because we also have two payments on a, on a big bridge project to the west. And that's been washed away since November 21. And we didn't have the cash flow to cover those invoices. So I had to basically have been lobbying the state government over several years. But certainly I then sent a very urgent email to Minister Aitchison. And within five minutes she responded with and had all the staff looking at it. Because I said, we need, we need our assessments done, but we, for our cash flow, we need to have our reimbursement, but we need to be part of the tripartite arrangements where the government puts that 20% funding up and then the 50%, et cetera. So council is not carrying, basically being the bank for the state government. Anyway, that is well progressed now. And in, I think it was a week and a half ago, we have now signed to the tripartite agreement. And we are hoping that will certainly improve our cash flow. We are still awaiting our reimbursements of over $6 million from, I think it's about 18 months ago, something like that. And it's particularly, makes it difficult for us to respond to an emergency, et cetera, et cetera. And being a, a small rate base with financial sustainability issues as a result. And it just makes life very, very difficult when you lurch from one disaster to another and you have these impediments. The other impediment we have is our community has been waiting and waiting for for three, three and a half years for these works to be done. And with each subsequent event, of course, that exacerbates the existing condition of that network. And then by the time we get the assessments and approvals, our, our expected cost has blown out. But it also means all of a sudden, with the time constraints we're facing now, all this work, if it gets approved, is going to be done very rapidly instead of us being able to gradually, gradually progress it over the last few years. So it has been very frustrating, not just from a council perspective, but also from a community. And in that same time, we've been dealing with the increased, we almost call it a regional inflation up here because of what's happened in the Northern Rivers and up here, there is a premium. There is a premium price to be paying for contractors for, for supplies, et cetera. And perhaps Heinz would like to add to that.
Yeah, most certainly, from a regional perspective, with the flooding in Lismore and Northern Rivers, generally it definitely puts a strain on the availability of contractors and specialised people to come in and do the work. And if they are available, they come at a price.
Thank you. I wondered just to continue on from that. Do you struggle to find the skilled employees in particular to undertake, you know, the work, the capital projects that you are needing to fund? And in, if you, if so, how do you keep costs under control? For both councils?
Quite likely. We're, sorry, from our perspective, sorry, Claus. Because, because of those overruns, and even from a private perspective in town here, I know builders here who've lost staff because they can get more in the Northern Rivers, building things in Lismore. They can command a premium price. They're actually getting more than the builder would make here after paying the staff. So it's just the, what has happened because of supply and demand. But we are, in a way, we are, we've been, it's been difficult to get some of these works done. Tendafil is a nice place to, to live. So we're fortunate. We've just recently gotten a new Director of Infrastructure and that is part of that. He likes, luckily, he likes a challenge, but it also is a, is a nice location. However, that cost keeps, keeps rising and we were forced into doing such things such as selling assets that we, community use assets that we would otherwise have wanted to continue. We've shut our visitor's centre, our face-to-face centre, just to save that funding. We closed our Australian National Icon School of Arts, Henley Park's museum in order to save money purely for operational costs. And that's what's happening to us. And, you know, we keep hoping that if the federal government responds to the local government association please, over many years, to go back to the one percent of the tax income instead of what it has now been eroded to point five, two percent, that would be a complete game changer. But instead of doing that, unfortunately, it's actually reduced even further since the last election. It's all about, yeah, we are a rural council with very little opportunity for own source revenue. We can't do parking meters and parking fines and all those other things that metropolitan councils have at their, at their disposal. So I think our, our own source revenue is about twenty-eight percentish, something like that. And the, the local government target is sixty percent. So we're, you know, we're less than half of that, simply because of where we are. And we are not alone because that unfortunately is the situation that rural shires find themselves in. Thank you.
I guess at Clarence Valley, we're in a slightly different position to Tendafil. Certainly prior to the events in the Northern Rivers, we were experiencing a lot of problems securing and retaining skilled staff because of the highway upgrade. So we lost a lot of staff to transport New South Wales, who could see, you know, a two or three-year contract ahead of them at least and significantly more money than we could offer them. We have had, however, since the events to the north of us, because we were not so badly affected, we were able to mobilise fairly quickly in terms of securing contractors. So, and we were purely by chance, we were very lucky to secure a transport New South Wales officer who had been on the other side of the grant application process. Been on the transport side of things in terms of ensuring that councils completed their disaster recovery fund applications appropriately, had all the documentation and we managed to secure him. Because he was a resident in the area, he had worked here previously and he came back to council and saw a position that appealed to him, which meant that good things just kind of collided at the one time and we had someone on board who understood the process, who could get us ahead of the ball. We weren't affected in the same way that the councils to the north. And as it turns out, we managed to secure a significant, well over a hundred million in disaster funds, which means that we were really delivering something like a sixteen-year road maintenance programme in two years. And we are a year into that now. So we now have great success in securing staff purely because we are delivering good things and community talk about it now. Particularly in terms of our road network. But I would say that the other thing that we've managed to do, as a bigger council than Tendafil is, so we have more, we have over five hundred staff now. We have managed to introduce very recently, about twelve months ago, an internal grow your own programme where we've actually upskilled a lot of our staff. We spent a lot of time doing that. And that was something that we kicked off on the back of COVID because we recognised we weren't necessarily going to secure people coming to the regions anymore because they come with their own jobs now. They can work, they could work from home for that period of time. So having said that, I mean, I hope that continues for Clarence Valley. But I know that that's not, that's an unusual case in regional New South Wales.
May I also add from Tendafil that we're a rural town and we have a number of villages, but most of our workers come from the town of Tendafil or the Northern village of Urbanville. But given the extent of the disasters, a lot of our staff actually come off farms or small farms, et cetera. And so with the impact that they themselves have had, some of those skilled staff have gone safe to the mines because they can get three times the income to assist their family in recovering. So that has eroded our, you know, our greater crews, our water, I think, I think only two months ago, we had one water cut operator instead of four. We're down to three greater, greater operators. But we had to upskill internal to actually help maintain that. So it's not just the direct council staff issue, it's, it's the disaster impact on the community that is feeding into our, our ability to attract staff. And then the other staff we have internally in administration and planning and all those kinds of things then get attracted to other councils who can pay them more than we can, even though they would kind of like to stay, to stay here. And that then slows down things such as, you know, the development process, just our grant. You know, we need grants, but we don't have enough people to keep applying for them or quit them and all those kind of things. So it's a bit of a, a bit of a spiral. Thank you.
Thank you. Just turning to my colleagues.
Would I just add to that?
Sure.
I think there's a bit of a, the mayor from Tendafil just mentioned something there that reminded me. There, there's a bit of a falsity, I suppose, in a view that it's, that regional councils are not able to attract only, it's not only professional staff, we're talking about the mayor from Tendafil spoke about water cutters, similarly greater operators. It's, it's actually skilled labour as well as professional staff that regional councils struggle to attract and, and sometimes retain, to be honest, because some of the big transport, construction companies moving through the area and picking up contracts with all of the work around, are looking for those plant operators too.
Thank you. Dr Mandicon?
Thank you. Thanks Chair. My question is for Tendafil, please. I was interested in your commentary on the special rate variation process. It's my understanding that you voted against a second SRV in November last year. We've heard a significant amount of feedback from other regions as part of this inquiry. Could you talk about what that process was like to go through?
Not very pleasant, I have to say. And it was particularly difficult for our councils at the time because they'd only been inducted, I think, on the 12th of January. And a week later, they were being told we needed an eighty-six percent special rate variation in order, in order to achieve financial sustainability. So you can imagine how that went down. And we ended up, we actually chose to defer that for twelve months the day before our rain event started, which also happened to be the day that Russia invaded Ukraine. So of course inflation went through the roof and, but we'd made that decision. And that same again, Lismore and the Northern Rivers also had the terrible flooding. So we then started the process later that year, did our community consultation, et cetera, kept going over and over and over. The, the numbers, the depreciation is the, is a real killer. And I might note that the Minister Hoenig, he keeps saying it is, part of that is, is not sensible in depreciating assets that are non-realisable. We also have that cost shifting, et cetera, that we've got to cover with our rate. Rate vary, increase we were awarded last year. And so the whole I part, the, the rate peg at that stage, I think we were given zero point seven percent increase, even though just the wages increase was two point five percent. So it made no common sense at all, let alone the inflation impact. So we were, we were going backwards from a place where we were already backwards. We were one of the lower rated shires in the state, but we do have high charge fees because of our population and the costs. So, so even with the forty-three percent we were awarded that took effect this time last year, we have still got less, our rates in some instances are actually less than some of our, our neighbours. The reason we chose to not proceed again with the other forty-three percent in November last year was that we didn't have updated data on our assets, asset values. That's just recently been done because we would have had to go back to I part with very similar information that we'd had from before. We also were dealing with asset condition and a few of those other things. And we just felt, given that in October, late October, we had fifty-six fire events start in less than two hours, including one of our paddocks. So Tendafil at that stage was ringed by fires and also fires further afield. And we just thought, and at the same time, the cattle price had plummeted and all the sales had been called off, et cetera. We just felt we could not go to the community with another rate increase when they were yet, they were still recovering from floods and fires and drought, let alone new fires, absolutely plummeted commodity prices. And we, we are an agricultural shire. We have, you know, a lot of producers and of course with the rates, any percentage increase in rates affects the farmland more than anyone else because other than the waste charge, everything is rates that they are paying. So we deferred it till now. And in fact, we've only just done, we were coming from our council meeting where in our budget documents, we have voted to go through an SRV process in the coming months. You know, and we're looking at potentially the only way to, to resume some sort of financial sustainability within a shorter, well, acceptable period of time is a thirty percent, twenty-five percent, ten percent increase over three years. And now that's going to be, whether that's achievable with our community inability to pay. That's some of the things we're juggling unless we get some good news from the federal government that they actually might give a reasonable financial assistance grants or there's a change to the rate peg methodology that does reflect the true and proper increases that council do incur, not just from CPI, but also from council land costs. So yeah, so anyway, it is not a pleasant experience going through a special rate variation and we're going to hook into it again.
Can I ask a follow-up please Chair? Thanks. That answer was very comprehensive. And I just wanted to follow up something you mentioned in your answer, which is depreciation. And Clarence Valley may well want to jump in on this. I'm well aware of the issue with the red fleet and there's another parliamentary committee looking specifically at that at the moment. But more generally, when you look at depreciation of things like rural roads that, you know, often rural councils need grants from state or federal government to maintain or replace anyway. And just, I'm interested in your views on, I guess, the appropriateness of having to account for depreciation on your books of those assets when it's unlikely that you'll actually be paying for the maintenance of those assets.
Yes. So we have got two roads that had previously been highways. So one is the Bruxton Highway to the road, it's now called the Bruxton Way to the West. It goes from here to Gundawindy. And then the one to the north, which is called the Mount Lindsay Road now, that goes from Tendafil due north for two hundred kilometres and then over to Wodenbong and into Queensland. Now, we had applied to have them under the previous coalition government as part of that roads transfer back to the state because we felt they are, they should go back to being highways. When the present government came in, that decision was, that programme was shelved. And Minister Aitchison did say at county mayors that she thought it was more important to actually get money into councils to maintain the roads. Some councils have said, look, we don't care who owns them, we just want money for maintenance. And I said, well, we do care who owns them because our depreciation accounting is about eight million dollars a year. Those two roads account for over nine hundred thousand of that. So we're talking about, you know, an eighth of our depreciation is tied up in those two roads. And the block grant funding we get to maintain them as a, I would call it a state, regional road, actually doesn't cover the maintenance cost on them. So Minister Aitchison has said in response to my question, she said, you can still apply as an individual council, that's, which is great. However, we can't apply while we are still doing disaster repair works. So we are, as I said before, we're still waiting to fix the bridge that the embankment washed away in twenty twenty, in November twenty twenty-one. So once that bridge is fixed, then we can apply to have that road handed back and become a highway again. It's quite a significant route. So this is three and a half years following that bridge washing away that we're still, we're only just now in the process of repair. But interestingly, it was cheaper to put a fourth span across where this embankment keeps washing away and this bridge is stranded in the middle of the creek. But because of an interpretation of betterment, we're going to rebuild the embankment back out to the bridge that's currently stranded, stranded at a greater cost than had we just put a fourth span across to where the creek wants to go. So it's going to wash away again and that's just over seventeen million dollars. So that's a bit of another frustration. But anyway, once that bridge is up and done, we can then apply to have that road handed back. Whether it gets through, I'm not sure, but it would certainly help with our depreciation. The same with the Mount Lindsay, we still have some awaiting disaster works there as well. And we will be applying to have that one handed back to the state because depreciation, there are some things that, it's not just the depreciation, there's another thing you should familiarise yourselves with. It's called net losses from disposed assets. And this is the one that really gets me. So when we've replaced bridges, et cetera, prior to their predetermined supposed life. So say we've said a bridge is going to last eighty years and at sixty years it got burnt or washed away and we've replaced it. We then have to account not only for the depreciation of the new higher value bridge, we also have to account for the depreciation we didn't use up. So the year before last, our net losses from disposed assets was two point eight million. In private accounting, in the private business world, that would be wiped off. But not in, not in council land. So, you know, we're, we're just on a flogging to nothing.
I'm happy to pass to my colleague if no one else wanted to jump in on it.
Maybe just to add that depreciation of roads is a difficult thing to comprehend given that when does the life of a road end? I mean, a road is a road. a lot longer than its, you know, initially determined life, I suppose. So we actually have a policy where there are some roads, some bitumen roads that come into such disrepair and if the traffic movements on them is quite low, we'll return them to unsealed roads as a because we can actually maintain a better unsealed road than we can a bitumen road that's falling apart. We've actually got one in, the councillors considered just yesterday as part of their IPNR documentation that they're making. And the cost to return that bitumen road to an unsealed road is forty-five thousand, whereas to to rehabilitate it as a sealed road is two hundred and twenty-five thousand. It has four properties, it's servicing four properties. So I guess this idea that at a point in time you can determine when the end of life of a road will be, when in fact people will continue to use the road regardless of the condition it's in, just the way they use it may change, is difficult to comprehend in terms of adding that to your depreciation.
Can I just add to that, Laura, and that's a very interesting point. But from our perspective as well, where we haven't had our asset management plans being developed up to, you know, in, if we are terms, the engineering in terms, up to an advanced level, it's very difficult for us to rely on any information coming out of our asset management plans at this point in time to make any projections, financial projections into the future. So very difficult to rely on a long-term financial plan over the next ten years when you know that you don't have robust data informing the information in that ten-year plan. And that's where it becomes more tricky, is to understand that depreciation costs is really, if you like, an accounting type of costs. But asset management is really an engineering type of principle and both unnecessary to inform the decision-making process going forward into the future. Because if the actual engineering asset condition assessment indicates that assets are at a more dilapidated state than what the accounting information reflects, well, you end up with a big, you know, a backlog or a bigger backlog. And that needs to be funded. Depreciation rates then is not adequate to fund that difference between those two things. So it's complex. It's not easy to understand.
Thank you very much. My question is for Clarence and just following from your submission. You outline in terms of the submission, the planning certificate costs and it's quite a startling description that you outline in terms of the history of the regulated fees from nineteen seventy-nine at forty dollars to twenty twenty-five where it's sixty-nine dollars. And you outline the case as well, where in nineteen seventy-nine it was mostly a two-page yes-no response to now where it's seven to eight pages in length and includes complex information. Just interested in terms of that document, what do you think would actually be the cost to council for producing a planning certificate?
I don't have it on me, but I could certainly take that on notice and find it. I mean, there is something in the cost of an employee, the days that it takes to assess the proposal. I imagine that you're probably talking quite a few thousand dollars difference that the community is subsidising any one planning application.
If you'd be able to, not adding to the community's cost unnecessarily, but if you'd be able to take it on notice in terms of the cost that, in terms of what you're recouping for planning certificates and what it costs you, that would be quite interesting so that we could get an understanding as well. And just wanted to clarify as well from your submission that it's outlined that there's twenty-six, and I take it there's an extra zero there, twenty-six thousand ratepayers from which rating income of fifty-three thousand dollars is derived. Just wanting to clarify, is that supposed to be five point three million or is that fifty-three thousand?
It is, no, it is, you're right.
Okay. No, no, no worries. Just wanted, I'd just seen that and I thought it was remarkably low, so thought it might have been a typo.
Yeah, it is a typo, you're right.
That's all right. But on that question though, in terms of, and this is similar for for Tenerfield as well, but when it comes to Clarence Valley, you of course, in a very large area with a small rate base, are expected to do a lot more than what other councils are, particularly with managing those, the road network that you have. Just interest in terms of what funding sources are you using at the moment when it comes to grant funding? And I note your comments before about getting somebody from the inside. But are you finding that grant funding is your main source of funding revenue, your funding base for when it comes to roads and the like?
Certainly in the case of roads, we have secured in the last two years something like a hundred and ten million dollars for our road network alone on the back of the on the back of the floods to the north. You'll note in the submission, there is a bit of a conversation there around Armadale Road, which picks up on something that Tenerfield mentioned before. Armadale Road was identified as a regional road to be reclassified. And we found ourselves in a very, in the position that Tenerfield is in at the moment where we had to complete some upgrades on the road before it could actually be handed back to the state. We were given a deadline of December twenty twenty-two, I think it was. Yeah, we had to complete all the programmes. In that period of time, we didn't apply for any other grant funds for that road in particular because we were aiming for, we didn't want to have to extend the deadline for handing the road back. Of course, the minister came out late last year and told us that the transfer of the road was not going to happen. So we estimated that there were about seventeen million grant funds that we might have applied for during that period of time that we didn't get to require for that road. So predominantly, we've been very successful with the disaster funds of late, but we're also using roads to recovery, our block grant, a whole heap of cocktail kind of funding to, along with some of the council general revenue, we have a an SRV that the council approved in, that was approved, sorry, by IPART for three years, commencing eighteen, nineteen. But that's been retained in our rate base obviously, and we allocate those funds. We are required by, we were required to report on that for ten years. So we had to have a plan in place to spend that for ten years. So it hasn't fallen to fund our operational budget. It is just about five million a year now that actually goes towards our infrastructure costs. Prior to that, we didn't have any general funded capital works programmes at all. So we do have seed funding to apply for grants, but our own source operating revenue is only, we're about forty-three percent. So yeah, we're heavily reliant on grants for our infrastructure. And as you can see from the submission, it's not just about two point five thousand kilometres of roads. There's nearly three hundred bridges and there's playgrounds and there's a community hall in every in every community and lots of open space, that kind of stuff. So, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I didn't have any further questions. Did you, Mr. Follow? I'll just wait till Dr. Con gets back into the room. But did you have any? No. Did you have any final remarks, just in the time we have left, that, you know, you would have liked to have covered today that you don't think we've covered in this, in the time we've had to give evidence?
I guess just one other point is cost shifting from the state government onto local government. In the instance of Tenerfield Shire Council, you know, relatively small rural council, our calculations that we have done a couple of years ago for local government New South Wales, when they conducted a survey in this regard, is in the order of one point five million cost shifting each and every year that the local community is expected really to pay for services that have been passed on to council by the state government. So that's a significant additional burden on local communities.
And from me, well, obviously there's a number of different parts of that cost shifting. We are certainly hoping with the treasurers, I think it's the Treasury reviewing the emergency levy, that that may be taken out of council and be dealt with by the state government in another way. I know they've got four options out, I think, on a paper at the moment. The, your local government minister also said that the financial assistance grants from the federal government that we're very reliant on because they're they're not tied to specific new shiny things. They are at council's discretion generally. But there's this no worse off kind of rule which penalises rural councils. And he's trying to have that changed, that the rural councils, and that was the the Grattan Institute, I think, this time last year, came out with the same thing, that the rural councils are penalised by the way in which those grants are distributed because we are so reliant on them and in fact should be getting a bigger section of the pie. So you can imagine, and I know Clarence has got lots of, you know, swimming pools and parks, etc., and lots of other public buildings. But as Laura just said, they've got two and a half thousand kilometres with twenty-six thousand ratepayers. We've got seventeen hundred kilometres with five thousand and sixteen rates notices. So I just think the whole combination of what we now have is tied grants, reduction in the federal assistance, cost shifting from particularly state government more than federal, the increase in public land that do not pay rates, but certainly have a big impact on us in, particularly in disaster time and fires. All of these things just keep, and social expectation of the soft services we provide, you know, the lobby, the business centre, the museums, etc., etc., the swimming pools, the nice-to-haves. And we try to get back to have-to-haves simply because of our financial sustainability. And then, of course, the community want pretty well everything, but either don't want to pay more or aren't in a position to pay more. A lot of people with an aging population, we have a lot of people on fixed incomes. And then on the other side, as I said, we're an agricultural shire, so we've got a lot of farmers who are price price takers. So their incomes are up and down and as I said, they've had a particularly bad seven to eight years. So, yeah, it's a hard it's a hard situation to be in. And I certainly hope that IPART and the ministerial, the government review into the rate pegging methodology and rate capping, not just the rate peg, but rate capping, has some positive results for councils as well as the, you know, emergency services levy and the Red Fleet. Look, under no accounting standards are council responsible for the Red Fleet, that word control. We don't control, we don't control what they buy, we don't control what they sell, we don't control where they put them. And it even says in the act that before they move it from a shire, they're supposed to get our permission. Well, they don't. And we support the RFS, of course we do. I was at an RFS thing on Saturday at one of our villages. And of course we support, I'm a member of the RFS myself. But at the end of the day, they need to be responsible for their own accounting and that act needs to be modernised, as has the SES and the Police Act. And our ratepayers should not be responsible for even worse financial sustainability if the RFS suddenly decides to purchase a whole heap of new equipment and situate it in Tenerfield, over which council has no control and cannot plan. We cannot plan and it just makes us look worse and worse. So it needs to be a standalone environment. It's changed to what it used to be once the empire became what it is, was taken from councils and the act just wasn't modernised with that. So anything in that respect would be welcome. But that's, you know, a relatively small part of our entire depreciation story. I think Minister Hoenig has certainly some very choice words to say on depreciation of such as, you know, depreciating a drain, you know, you can't sell a drain, let alone the additional costs we get from, we're about to go to election. So the electoral commission have two weeks of pre-polling. So I was at a recent county mayors, I think Tweed said their last election cost something like nine hundred thousand dollars, which is, you know, it's a huge cost. So, and when Minister Hoenig has said to the electoral commissioner, well, I want a change to just one week pre-polling. And his commissioner's response was, well, I'll put in double the booths and I'll get the same money. So, yeah, how arrogant is that?
Can I also talk about pensioner rebates?
Please do.
Because, you know, it's another example where over time, the amount we're rebated as a council hasn't increased. You know, the example was given earlier about the building certificates and things, but with pensioner rebates, we are required by law to give rebates to pensioners. But then the amount we're compensated by central government has not, has not really changed. And that's not really fair because in LGAs like ours, we have a very aging population. And that means that we're having to support that more and more by a smaller rate base.
But I would also add to, this is a couple of things. The population, the community's expectation has certainly changed over time. We get a lot of population moving, particularly from metropolitan areas, and their expectation of services is significantly higher than we can deliver. I'd also mention tourism, particularly for coastal councils. So currently the rate payer subsidises tourism as well and that's not figuring in any cost shift at all. We have Yambas, a perfect example. Population increases by something like ten to fifteen thousand over the, any holiday period. And the rate payer has to fork out the funds for the increased maintenance of amenity in the area to, so that, you know, there's quite a demand there. And one of the things that I really think needs to be looked at is the, in the rate peg, this idea that councils can become, regional councils can become more productive, more efficient. To do that in this day and age actually costs a bit of money and time and effort. And regional councils simply don't have the cash available to upgrade systems, do the things that councils with more funding, more rating income can actually do to become more efficient. So we are, in regional New South Wales, we are very much manual beasts and it's very difficult to get ahead of that productivity curve. And I just, I think that's something that definitely ought to be looked at.
Apologies, Bronwyn here again from Tenerfield. Laura, just a reminder too, with tourism, it's not just tourism. People go, oh, but you know, tourism's great for the town. Council should support it and we do. But tourists don't bring council one extra dollar. They cost us more in toilets and roads and all those other services. The other thing we have is due to the floods and due to COVID, a lot of people thought, well, Tenerfield's a great place to be. We might get flooded, but you're not in a flood plain up the top here. And we're also close enough to Brisbane or the New South Wales. Our big issue is connectivity, but a lot of people can work from home and be close enough to go to meetings. So we have therefore seen a lot of subdivisions. But due to rate capping, we get no benefit from subdivisions, even though we've got more people, more services to provide those people. We are stuck at the same level of rates we can apply rather than going, oh, you're a new person. We can do some sort of adjustment to enable to get, you know, a little bit more rate. We can do some sort of adjustment to enable to get, you know, a, a little bit more rates because we're actually now going to have greater, greater pressure. And that hasn't been considered either. As, but I'm sure it will be as part of the uh the rate capping debate.
Thank you. Um were there any other final thoughts before we finish up?
Can I just mention that, and I realise this is a constitutional issue and a referendum for the nation. But the fact that local government in Australia is not, hasn't, does not uh have any constitutional recognition provides for a system where local government is just an extension of the states. And may I say, with all due respect, you know, at times the plaything of the states, where we are subjected to whims of the state government. And that's the reason why we are currently in the position that we're in. State government policy regarding uh rate capping, federal government not increasing the FACS grants uh to a percentage of the national income uh and adhering to the reason why it had recently been implemented. And that it is, that is for all residents of Australia, regardless of where they live, to have access to similar quality of services. Clearly, we don't have that. We don't adhere to that anymore. Um and it's, it's, it's really, it's reached the point now where it has almost virtually become impossible for local government to survive uh with all these constraints put, being put onto us. Uh and it makes for organisations, workplaces that are really stressful to work in uh and try to survive within.
And I'd just like to say thank you very much for your interest. And if you need any further information from us, please contact us.
Thank you. Um thank you all for appearing today. Um there were questions, I believe, taken on notice. Uh the committee secretary will be in touch um with you about those and you will have twenty one days um to respond. Um that concludes our hearing for today. Thank you again for making the time to give evidence.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.